We will start with the Pledge of Allegiance, and I didn't ask anybody to lead, but Supervisor Shackleton.
Absolutely, you bet. Anything for you. Well, please join me in saluting our nation's flag. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible with liberty and justice for all.
We'll begin this morning's meeting with Item 1, Board of Supervisors Matters, and we'll start with Supervisor Vanderpoel.
All right, thank you, Mr. Chair. A little bit under the weather today. My three Petri dishes, aka children at home, brought home some illnesses from preschool. So, you know, in preschool, I guess they don't even teach washing hands, so. But anyways, that's neither here nor there. This week, a few public events I wanted to highlight. The Board of Retirement will be having an investment committee meeting on tomorrow at 2:00 at Tassera's boardroom. And then the Board will be having its retreat this Thursday at the Convention Center. And I, a few things, you know, this doesn't happen very often, but I think it's important that we're all aware. I did receive a letter from Vincent Zaninovich and Sons. It's a large table grape option, or operation in the south part of the county, under the Federal Worker Adjustment and Restraining Notification Act and Labor Code. They sent a notification indicating they would be restructuring the company, could potentially mean shutting down some of the operations, and the advisory indicated this could affect 511 jobs in the county, which is, I think, is very significant. And then that same restructuring is going to take place in their office side as well, and that will affect an additional 31 people. So, almost 550 people could be affected by this restructuring of this company. So, very significant in this agricultural county and the jobs, and hopefully all of the county departments that have resources will be able to come to the rescue and connect them with job opportunities or various services. On a positive note, we don't get this very often, but I wanted to pass this along. I had a constituent take the time to send me a very nice, lengthy email specifically complimenting two employees in the Resource Management Agency, and I don't really want to read all of the detail, but one of the lines just indicated that they worked hard together and went above and beyond by issuing the permit quickly so that a transaction didn't get thrown off and that a family wasn't kept out of a home. And I just, I think that these employees followed through and communicated with me and the trucking company every step of the way. We appreciate their help so much and thought you should know. You've got great employees in the both of them. I know that the county has a lot of great people working for it, but I think that when we have constituents that take the time to call out some individuals, I think it's very worthwhile of making mention of them. So, congratulations to these RMA employees. I don't want to name them because I don't want to embarrass them, but keep up the great work and know that all your work is much appreciated. That's all I have, Mr. Chair.
Good. Supervisor Townsend.
Okay. Well, I also have a letter that I'd like to start off by sharing. I am going to name names because it's about one particular person. But this says, Supervisor Dennis Townsend, I recently had occasion to attempt research into the River Ridge Ranch history within the archives of the Tulare County Board of Supervisors Administrative Office. While there, on two occasions, I was helped by Deputy Clerk Hillary Robello. I am pleased to report that Ms. Robello's demeanor, competence, perseverance, and willingness to assist were superb. Not only did we find what we sought, but the entire experience was a model of how a citizen might wish to have government operate. Kudos to Ms. Robello and to the county. Thank you, Gary Ades, Ph.D., owner of River Ridge Ranch, President of River Ridge Institute. And, you know, it's just not all that often that you have really positive feedback, and so just along with-
And we didn't stage that either.
We didn't. We didn't. I didn't know he was going to read one. But congratulate, is Hillary in here? She's not.
Very happy.
Okay, she's working.
She's issuing great customer service.
That's great. All right, we'll pass that along anyway, but I wanted to share that publicly. A bunch of things have been happening. Went to the Mighty 190 meeting in Porterville, had some good discussions there. TCAG Retreat, and Retreat is a euphemism for a working session. And, but we had that up in Three Rivers and got some things done. Got to meet with the staff, and it's always, always a good event up in Three Rivers at St. Anthony's. Also had the, had the opportunity to tour and do a press conference regarding Senate Bill 559 out by Terabella on the Friant Kern Canal with Senator Hurtado's Bill 559 to get $400 million for funding for the, to address the subsidence on the, on the canal. So, we're out there with Senator Hurtado and Senator Borges, Samim and Mathis. Supervisor Valero joined us out there, and others, and so in hopes that something will come of that bill and others to address some of our needs here. Was able to attend the Xanta Art and Wine Dinner in Porterville, beginning of the month. Had a meeting with the librarian and the deputy librarian of the county to learn a little bit more about the, about how the libraries work in our county and how we interact with the city libraries as well. Leadership Porterville came over at the beginning of the month. Had a chance to meet with them, to welcome them here to the Board of Supervisors chambers as they toured. And it was a real honor to present a proclamation to Virginia Radliff, Ms. Virginia, up in Springville, a teacher that has taught literally generations of students in Springville, and so it was very well-attended, her 100th birthday party. We could all hope to get there and still be sharp like she is.
And where did she go to school? I just want to make inquiry there.
Yeah, she did happen to go to some obscure university down in Los Angeles.
Okay.
Will remain nameless, I guess.
UCLA, well represented. Hundred-year-old.
Yeah, she did have a little stint there. But I was also, also wanted to just note, went up to the Upper Tulie Association Meeting, which is the mountain communities up in Camp Nelson and surrounding area. And I just wanted to, again, publicly thank Reed Chenky and Johnny Wong from RMA for all of their help in putting, getting my questions answered and being able to present the answers to the, to the people up in those communities. And also the follow-up that they've been doing has just been tremendous. So, thank you, all you guys from RMA, for all the work you're doing in that area. Also, the Sheriff and Fire Departments were also both very well-represented up there, so thank you. Thank you as well for them. Speaking of Sheriff and Fire, I was the guest speaker at the Public Safety Recognition Dinner in, in Porterville a couple of weeks ago, or last week, I should say, and was able to present several awards and certificates on behalf of the county as well to all those serving in public safety. And one of the things this, being, being on the Board of Supervisors gets you is a lot of gigs as an emcee. And so, I emcee the Man Alive, the 10th Annual Man Alive Event in Porterville, Christian Men's Event. And David A. R. White was the speaker. He's a filmmaker, and he, he's the one that produced the God's Not Dead series, and, which is the fifth, fifth grossing movie of all time, I believe. And he's looking at making some more movies here in Tulare County, so we're going to be following up with him. And the same day, helped to emcee the Sheriff's Bonfire Event. And so, lots of emceeing gigs lately, but that's what's been going on. Sorry for taking a long time.
All right, we've got all day, huh?
Yeah. Amy's going to take longer, probably.
That's right. Supervisor Shackleton.
All right, thank you. I, too, received a letter. Unfortunately, it wasn't so positive. It was about Supervisor Vanderpoel, so. Sorry, Pete. No, over the last few weeks, I've, of course, been attending my typical meetings, Homeless Task Force and whatnot, but some, some highlights of the last two weeks is, I was, I got to be a judge for the Ms. Tulare County Pageant, which is always a treat to see the great talent and poise that we have. Some wonderful young ladies, and congratulations to Ms. Central Valley Marsha Crips and Ms. Tulare County Taylor Hyer. And I see her father in the back, and, Tim, congratulations. Obviously, she gets all her great traits from her mother, so congratulations. She will represent Tulare County well. I attended a groundbreaking of a new truck stop car wash in, in Goshen, which is the first being after the Betty Drive interchange revamp, and so very excited about that. It's been a long time in the making. Last Friday, I had the honor of giving the oath of office to our new firefighter engineers. And then on Saturday, they drove us in the parade, in Parade One, through the St. Patrick's Day Parade. So, thank you to Tulare County Fire. This Friday, I will be attending my San Joaquin Joint Powers Authority meeting, and then on Saturday, I will be emceeing the Sequoia Symphony Gala here in Visalia. So, that's all I have.
Supervisor Valero.
All right. Well, good morning, everyone. Great to see so many people in this room supporting the arts for our Farm Bureau contest. And so, I will begin, and it's more of a reflective, given the fact that, again, we haven't met within the past two weeks. So, there was an event that happened out in Wood Lake called the Seeds of Love Event, which was a huge success. We had about 100 people in attendance and recognized eight nonprofits doing great work in Tulare County. Yolanda Valdez, who's in the audience today, gave a powerful keynote presentation. And I don't know if many of you in this room know, but there's a small, little town in Italy, southern Italy, where one out of every 10 people live to be 100 years old. And so, she talked about that and really emphasized that it was because people working together in unity and supporting each other. And so, that was a great, great inspirational evening to really collaborate, but also to make sure that these organizations are doing work across the county and not just within their own communities. I was also able to participate in Read Across America last week in two districts, so Woodlake Unified and Cutlerosi Joint Unified, where I read "Did I Tell You How Lucky You Are" by Dr. Seuss, and it was to encourage and inspire our young students to think about positive experiences as opposed to always focusing on the negative. And then, as Townsend mentioned, participated in the Senate Bill 559 out at Terabella. In addition to that, that evening, I was able to sit at a roundtable to select 29 nonprofits in the Central Valley who will receive a total of $1 million to support their work in the Central Valley. And so, these funds are being provided by the Latino Community Foundation, a philanthropy organization based out of San Francisco with statewide impact and trying to make an impact in the Central Valley as well. I, too, attended the Goshen groundbreaking, and I'm excited to see major developments happening in Goshen due to that Betty Drive overpass. So, again, breaking ground on last Tuesday on Business Complex with Valley Fuel and my partner in community Supervisor Shackleton was there, too, to give a few words and thank the Tendori family for investing in Goshen. And I know there are many, many more things that are going to happen in Goshen, and we are very excited for that. Another highlight that afternoon was our groundbreaking in Yetam and Seville for the new water well that we're working on. We had many people and agencies participate, such as Self-Help Enterprises, the State Water Board, Tulare County, even in extreme weather conditions, because it was very rainy and windy. But hey, where there's a will, there's a way. So, I'm thrilled to see much-needed infrastructure going into Seville to support clean drinking water. In addition to that, that evening, I served as a judge for the Lions Club District Level Speech Contest, and I've been invited to serve as a judge for the Regional Level Speech Contest later this month in Clovis. So, I thank the Cutlerosi Lions Club for the honor and opportunity to serve. I attended the Wood Lake Awards Dinner two weeks ago to celebrate great work of individuals and organizations making Wood Lake a great place to work, live, and play. And then I served as a VIP waiter for the Dinuba Women's Luncheon. This annual event raises money to support the Relay for Life Event in April. Thank you to probation Chief Bonwell and LeAnn Williams, Division Manager out at the Juvenile Probation, Juvenile Facility, for providing me with a tour of the detention facility. That evening, I attended the Law Enforcement Dinner, as mentioned by Supervisor Townsend, and I was there to recognize my colleague, Erica Gonzalez, who received Attorney of the Year, in addition to all those other amazing individuals being recognized that evening. Last Friday, we had a census media briefing to spotlight California's rural regions, including Tulare County, as we have a higher risk of undercount due to our large immigrant population and prevalence of complex households. So, we had ABC 30, we had other news outlets there that afternoon to really spotlight this issue, given the fact that, I don't know if many of you are aware, but each count is typically $2,000 a month. So, imagine what we're losing in terms of bringing back those funds in order to support our, our county. And then, lastly, Fire Academy graduation and the Visalia St. Patrick's Parade with Supervisor Shackleton. So, again, thank you to Chief Norman for providing Fire Engine One. And lastly, as a disclaimer, I just want to mention that I was not part of the Farm Bureau's selection process, but I do have two cousins who will be receiving awards later this morning. So, thank you so much for that opportunity.
Good. Excellent. I just want to highlight a few things from the past and a couple of issues that are, that are upcoming. First, I attended the NACO, which is National Association of Counties Legislative Conference, a couple of weeks ago. And some of the highlights that, that I want to just relay to the rest of the Board and to staff is that we have a really great lobbyist, and I know some of us already know that, but there were many times that other counties were asking, how did you, how were you able to have a, a meeting, a private meeting with the Undersecretary of the USDA? How were you able to meet with the Bureau of Reclamation Commissioner privately, as well as Senator Feinstein? And that's something that, I guess, I kind of just took for granted, that we were able to have access and that those individuals, that other counties have that same access, and, but hearing from, from other counties, they don't have that same access. They're meeting with deputies, they're meeting with assistants, they're meeting with staffers, and, you know, that happens on occasion when calendars don't align, when these trips go back, but that wasn't the case that I was able to experience. So, I was able to meet with Undersecretary Hubbard, with Commissioner Berman, and with Senator Feinstein. And some highlights from that, Senator Feinstein was very enthusiastic about making sure that there were additional appropriations for the WIN Act, specifically on Temperance Flat. She was adamant about making sure that the federal government had the monies to meet the 50% match requirement, which would be a huge hurdle. If, if the feds came in with a billion and a half dollars for Temperance Flat, that makes it a lot more fiscally manageable. The Bureau, our main topic was to make sure that the feasibility study on Temperance Flat was complete. They've committed to having it completed by the end of the year. Unfortunately, that's not as fast as I would like it. They promised that it would be done last August. It's still not complete. There's been some hiccups, but they have funding for that, and so we're, we're going to continue to press them to try and get that sooner. The feasibility study has to be complete first before we can really get into any type of discussion about construction. And then, there was also another part, is part of the conference, which I had heard this presentation before, but it just kind of highlighted something that, that was expanded under the Farm Bill and the Omnibus Bill. There were additional measures for forest management that were given in both of the last, in those last two iterations. And Placer County has taken one of those new agreements, the Good Neighbor Authority, and been able to partner with the local water district, with the California Air Resources Board, the Forest Service, some private entities, as, and to really look at forest management from a collective standpoint, and how do we, how do we make all the improvements that we need? And all those entities have, have something to gain from it. Air Resources Board has something from an air quality standpoint. The water, from not only getting additional water into our reservoirs, but also from a standpoint of water quality. And then, from the private sector, the jobs that are created via that, and from the local government standpoint, just being able to protect its citizenry from catastrophic fires. So, that's something that, you know, they, they, they claim that they've started small when they initially got together, five, 10, 20-acre projects. They're now working on a 22,000-acre project, so it's gotten quite a bit larger, but it's been several years in the making. And so, that's something that, that I'm interested in seeing, if, if there's a possibility to partner with our own air quality, air pollution control district, with some of our water agencies, to try and see if there, there might be a few small projects to, to see if we can't implement something like that here. I also want to just commend staff on the Strathmore flooding issue that we had about a week and a half ago. I know that it was, it impacted 21 homes in Strathmore. There were three, I think ultimately, that had some, some degree of damage beyond just having water in their, in their yards. And so, I know the Sheriff's Department was out there in force and helping out with, with evacuations. We had fire that was out there throughout the night. Our Health and Human Services Agency was out and making sure that we had kits and that we were helping with creating a shelter at the high school and working with the Red Cross, and then RMA as well, helping with making sure that people could get back into their homes with roads closures and, and just moving people around. So, it was really kind of a localized event. It did receive some media attention, and I, and I, I know Friant Water Authority isn't here, but they also were a great partner in helping out and, and making sure that we could move some water into the canal a lot quicker than, than what we would have in the past. So, all in all, really appreciate everyone that, that helped out in that effort. And then, lastly, we, the Board kind of had a little bit of, of information on this yesterday at our TCAG meeting, but for the rest, you know, those of us that still have olives and, and send our olives to Bell Carter is really, we're really seeing a bit of a struggle right now with, with the investment of, of Spanish dollars into Bell Carter. They're, they are now, they've sent cancellation letters to all but 1,500 acres in California. For Tulare County, that's about $60 million. We've got about $60 million worth of olive production in our county. The Ag Commissioner, I want to thank you and the staff for helping to craft a letter. We've crafted a letter, will be sending out to, shortly to our congressional members. Really, the, the issue is, is that Spaniards are trying to, they have heavily subsidized product, that they're trying to get around tariffs and trying to flood our markets, and, and they've got creative, I'll give them credit, they, they figured out a loophole, but we've got to get this loophole fixed and make sure that we continue to protect our, our olive growers. And a place where, you know, we're, we're historically the olive capital of the United States. Lindsey Ripe, it wasn't that long ago that Lindsey Ripe was the largest olive producer in the world. And so, what, you know, it's, it's important from a historical standpoint, and it's, it's just important for the, for the growers to be able to, who have already made investments into this year's crop, to be able to recoup some of that investment and, as well as put money aside if, if, to change their, their growing practices, if that's what's needed. So, on that wonderful note, we'll move on to Item 2 and present a proclamation recognizing March 2019 as Social Work Month.
That'll be me.
That'll be Supervisor Shackleton.
You want to do a presentation first?
Just going to be short.
Okay.
Supervisor Shackleton. Good morning, Chairman Crocker, Members of the Board, Mr. Britton Council, Anita Ortiz, the Deputy Director for Child Welfare Services. Today, we are recognizing the dedication and service our social workers across HHSA provide to Tulare County. The National Association of Social Workers has announced the theme for Social Work Month of 2019 as Elevate Social Work. Our social workers in Tulare County elevate many people across our communities, and they are often serving the most vulnerable. Every March, social workers are recognized nationwide for their dedication and the sacrifices they make in order to enhance human well-being and help meet the basic needs of all people. We have about 254 social workers across our county, but this morning, we've invited a handful of them to join me here at the podium for the proclamation. Thank you for having us this morning.
Have them come up?
Yeah.
Come back here if you want.
Thank you, Anita.
You know, whenever we come up here to give these things, we always want to, you know, make a profound quote or something, and what I'm going to make today, who's laughing, is a little quote. You may recognize it. And this goes out to all of you and the other 200 and some odd social workers in Tulare County. Unless someone like you cares a whole awful lot, nothing is going to get better. It's not. And that is from the Lorax Dr. Seuss, and a lot of you work with children, so I thought that would be an appropriate quote. So, thank you all for what you do for the, the children and all citizens of Tulare County. So, with that, I will proclaim March 2019 as Social Work Month in Tulare County. Whereas March is National Social Work Month with an official theme of Elevate Social Work for 2019 embodies the needs to recognize the extraordinary contributions of the profession to our society. And whereas over 250 social workers are employed by Tulare County, social workers elevate and empower people, giving them the ability to solve problems, cope with personal roadblocks, and get the resources they need to succeed. Every day in communities throughout Tulare County, social workers are dedicated to enhancing well-being and helping meet the basic needs of all people, especially those who are vulnerable, oppressed, and living in poverty. And whereas the social work profession is deeply weaved into our society with social workers active in government, schools, universities, social and service agencies, communities, corporations, the military, and in healthcare and mental health care. And whereas social workers travel across the nation and world to provide in crisis, helping them overcome issues such as death and grief, epidemics, environmental pollution, and natural disasters such as wildfires, hurricanes, and floods. And whereas social workers for decades have been the forefront of social justice, pushing for equal rights for women, African-Americans, Latinos, people who are disabled, people who are LGBTQ, and various ethnic, cultural, and religious groups. Now, therefore, be it proclaimed that the Tulare County Board of Supervisors do hereby proclaim the month of March as Social Work Month in Tulare County and call upon the citizens, public, and private institutions, businesses, and schools in Tulare County to show their appreciation for the tremendous contributions of social workers. for the tremendous contributions of social workers that make the county a better place for all of its residents. So, and that is signed by Chairman Crocker and the rest of the board. So, thank you all.
And I'll give that to you. Thank you everybody. And I think it's photo op time.
We were already ready.
You were.
Thank you. Can I just share something real quick?
Absolutely. Any other board members want any comments?
I'd like to just share, uh, a little as well. I just want to thank you for the amazing work our social workers do to provide a safe and secure experience and environment for people. Although this profession can be challenging with a load to carry, you put others before self and connect the dots to make people love and heal again. So, thank you so much for doing that.
Yeah, there are comments from the board? Very good. Thank you. We appreciate all your hard work. Next we'll go to item three, uh, present a proclamation recognizing March 2019 as Child Abuse Prevention Month. And I believe we have Amanda Wahardo of the Tulare County Child Abuse Prevention Council in the audience. Or possibly not.
Maybe, maybe not.
Maybe it was our model.
My name is Tim. Amanda will be up in a moment. Good morning esteemed Supervisors, Mr. Britt. Uh, my name is Tim Zavala. I am the Executive Director at Tulare Youth Service Bureau, and I'm privileged to be the current President of the Tulare County Child Abuse Prevention Council, or CAPSI as we like to call it. During the 2017-18 fiscal year, there were over 1,600 unduplicated children that spent some time in foster care in Tulare County due to child abuse or neglect. On any given day in our county, there can be up to 1,500 open child welfare cases. This amounts to about eight children out of every thousand in our community that are directly involved in a substantiated case of child abuse. That is way too many. Many of us here have heard these or similar statistics, but there are many who have not. So, the CAPSI exists to raise awareness about child maltreatment and neglect, uh, to spearhead efforts, uh, of child abuse prevention, to be a resource for parents and families and professionals and our community as a whole. The Council exemplifies the notions of partnership and collaboration and is comprised of many local agencies, um, including Tulare County HHSA, Department of Mental Health, Child Welfare Services, Tulare County Office of Education, Family Services, the various family resource centers and education centers, um, mental health agencies like my own CASA, the Seroptimist Club, Bikers Against Child Abuse, Parenting Network, I could go on and on, there's so many. It is an amazing, uh, group of people to be a part of with a common purpose, and it's just a great team, uh, to be a part of. This past year, we raised awareness by having a presence at multiple community events and resource fairs. We brought mandated reporter training in partnership with Child Welfare Services to various agencies. We took the LISA Project to several schools and agencies and, and for those of you who don't know, the LISA Project is our mobile exhibit that brings the realities of child abuse to stark life. We also provided outstanding training to about 350 professionals at our annual Cynthia Lockhart Mummery Conference. This year, the title was Building Trauma-Informed Schools and Communities. We have done a lot this year, um, and together I believe we are making a difference for children, but obviously our work is not done. And we'll be shifting into overdrive in the month of April as we usually do. As if all this weren't enough, we also hired a new Executive Director, that is Amanda Wahardo. So, I'm happy to introduce Amanda to you now. She's going to come up. I'm pleased to introduce her. She comes to us with years of relevant experience as a leader. She has a passion to serve our community, she has a heart for kids and families, and she has a vision to make Tulare County a place that is safe for all children.
Thank you, Tim. Good morning and thank you so much. I'll just take a moment to, um, share that each year the Tulare County Child Abuse Prevention Council seeks to do more to ensure that every child grows up in a safe, stable, and nurturing environment. In April, join me and our council by participating in activities to show our commitment to children and families in Tulare County. It doesn't matter how big or small your effort. Prevention is about making sure our communities know and show that all children deserve great childhoods. Thank you.
All right. Tim and Amanda, if you'd like to join me in the well, I'll present the proclamation to you.
Actually have other councils?
Sure. Absolutely. Have, have the whole council come up if they're here.
I'm not going to be like Supervisor Shucklian and try to leave you with memorable quotes or anything else. I think, uh, just my action is memorable enough, Supervisor Shucklian. All right. Um, it's my, my pleasure to be here and present this proclamation on behalf of the Board of Supervisors, recognizing April, not March, uh, 2019 as Child Abuse Prevention Month in Tulare County. Whereas preventing instances of child abuse and neglect is a community issue and families across the state depend on Californians becoming a community in unity to end child abuse and neglect. And whereas raising awareness about the importance of providing a safe, stable, and nurturing environment for children to grow up in is a priority. And whereas adult adverse childhood experiences have a significant impact on a child's future and include physical, emotional, and sexual abuse, neglect, and parental stress or illness, and whereas child abuse and neglect is not only harmful to children in the moment, but can also have long-term negative effects such as increased chances of criminal behavior, substance abuse, smoking, obesity, and other health problems. And whereas effective child abuse and neglect prevention programs are the product of partnerships between social service agencies, schools, faith-based organizations, community-based organizations, and law enforcement formed with the goal of bettering their communities. And whereas the state of California must continue its efforts to promote and utilize programs to benefit children and families by raising awareness about child abuse and neglect and providing parents with the resources and tools they need to provide healthy environments for their children. And now therefore be it proclaimed that the Tulare County Board of Supervisors do hereby recognize April 2019 as Child Abuse Prevention Month in Tulare County and urge all citizens to recognize this month by dedicating themselves to the task of improving the quality of life for all children and families. Signed by Kyra Crocker, Pete Vanderpool, Amy Shucklian, Eddie Valero, and Dennis Townsend. Now, I, I really do appreciate the work that you do to limit and hopefully end eventually child abuse. Eight out of a thousand may not seem like a lot, but one out of a thousand's a lot. No child should be abused or neglected, um, as a part of their life. Uh, it, it's an inhumane treatment. We, you know, we look out for animals as much as we do, uh, for children, and I just really do feel that, um, the efforts you put forth are incredibly noble, um, and your dedication to children is much appreciated, uh, from a father of three, uh, little children. I just, I, I couldn't imagine, uh, seeing one of them be abused or neglected and to know that there are 1,500 or plus or minus cases in, in the county is just, uh, is disheartening to me and it really is, uh, a difficult to deal with. So, uh, please know that the efforts of the council are much appreciated and, and I do hope that everyone, uh, takes this month to really spread the awareness and, uh, help to have an impact on, uh, ending child abuse in our community. So, thank you very much. Uh, and now it's time to smile and take a photo.
You got, you got that tape on the ground?
I know.
Little stars?
Okay. Ready? One, two, three. I'm going to take one more. One, two, three. Thank you.
Thank you. Appreciate it. Thank you guys. Thank you. Thank you. Thank you. Thank you. We'll now go on to item four, presentation of the annual 2019 Calendar Art Contest. And I believe Tricia Stever Blattler of the Tulare County Farm Bureau is here to give an introduction and a presentation.
I have a few opening remarks and then I'm also going to invite up New Superintendent Hire to join us this year for all of these presentations. So, bear with me as I, I give a, a brief overview of why we're here to celebrate. You've already had wonderful celebrations this morning honoring several other important causes. March is also National Agriculture Month, and last week was celebrated as National Agriculture Week. Each year we honor agriculture as part of the arrival of spring, and I think here in Tulare County, we honor it day in and day out. But certainly with spring upon us, it provides us that opportunity to recognize the producers of food, fiber, flowers, forest, and fish. Less than 1% of our population is involved in farming and ranching. We know a lot of that population is right here in Tulare County and in central California, but this small group feeds our nation and our world. Here in the U.S., we are blessed with a safe, reliable, and affordable, abundant, year-round supply of food, and we spend less per capita on food than any other country in the world. So, the arrival of spring and the National Agriculture Month that we're celebrating all of March really serves as a backdrop for this annual art contest that Tulare County Farm Bureau and the Tulare County Office of Education started many, many years ago. It really started as a bumper sticker contest that Superintendent Jim Viedak brought to the Farm Bureau probably 20-plus years ago now. And that bumper sticker contest evolved into the Art Calendar Contest that we are so proud to present to you each year in March as part of National Agriculture Month. I also want to say thank you to staff at the Office of Education. Rob Herman plays a critical role in getting this calendar designed and to the printer in time for this third week of March. And it's always a, a dead rush, you know, a dead heat marathon from the time the entries are due in mid-February to make sure that we are ready to present to you during this week every year. And I also want to say thank you to our Education Committee. The Tulare County Farm Bureau, as you know, represents over 1,500 farm and ranch families and farm businesses throughout Tulare County. And one of our most pride, you know, one of our pride and joys is really our Education Committee. We have a committee made up of current educators, retired educators, and we have a number of support partnerships in that organization and that committee with the AgriCenter, the University of California Cooperative Extension, the Nutrition, Education, Obesity Prevention Programs, and certainly the County Office of Education. So, this is one of the great partnerships that we get to celebrate each year as part of National Ag Month. So, at this time, I'd also like to invite up Superintendent Tim Hire to share a few comments, and then we'll get started with the student presentation.
Thank you, Tricia. Good morning. Um, just wanted to acknowledge the partnership with the Tulare County Farm Bureau and thank them for all of their support. Um, without this partnership, we wouldn't be doing this. Uh, you can see this year's, uh, um, theme is Full Steam Ahead. And just to draw attention to that, the STEAM changed. It originally was STEM at the federal and state level, uh, to encourage students to pursue careers in science, technology, engineering, and math, which as all of you know, in Tulare County, uh, is, is, uh, playing a greater role in our agriculture industry. Uh, the addition of the A was for the arts, and that's really why we're here today. Um, and you can see that, uh, our students are understanding and beginning to make the connection between those other career fields and agriculture, and that's really, I think, the goal of this year's theme. So, with that, I want to again thank the Tulare County Farm Bureau. I want to congratulate all of our students and thank our staff, both at the Tulare County Office of Education, but out in our schools, uh, and our school districts who are supporting the arts as an integral part of our student education. So, again, thank you very much, and it's an honor to be here, uh, celebrating and presenting their artwork today.
We're going to have Superintendent Hire join you for the, the celebration and the certificate presentation, if that's okay. So, this year we had over 1,350 entries from 53 different schools throughout Tulare County. Our overall winner receives a cash prize of $50, and the other 13 winners received $25 prizes along with certificates that have been provided by the Farm Bureau, and they have the wonderful opportunity to meet their county supervisor today. And all students that entered this contest will receive a ribbon for participation, and their schools will receive copies of the calendar. The Office of Education mails those out to all the schools in Tulare County and all the winning sites and also the honorable benches. We have 12 additional students that will be featured in the calendar under the Featured Produce Recognition, and that's just another opportunity to identify some of the outstanding art that was in this county. And I will invite that if any of the supervisors would like to look at more of the art that came from their districts, I know Supervisor Crocker was interested in finding some additional art to maybe, you know, decorate his office. That art is certainly available for you to come in and take a look at. So, always let us know if that interests you. So, it is now my pleasure to call on our student winners, and we're going to take them in order by district. So, we will have Supervisor Crocker join us down in the well, and Superintendent Hire come forward. Our first honoree today is going to be Brisadi Alanese, a second grader from George L. Snowden. Congratulations. Come on forward.
She's almost as tall as you, Crocker.
So, Brisadi gets to show all the rest how this works. She's going to take that certificate and hold it up for her photo. Good job. From District Two, we can have Supervisor Vanderpool join us. Our next student recipient is Lila Carrera, a sixth grader from Joaquina Joint Elementary School. Congratulations, Lila. Please come forward. So, it seemed like the bragging rights used to always go to Supervisor Worthley, and, and Mr. Valero is going to get his, his rights here in a moment, but Supervisor Shucklian actually had a phenomenal amount of talented entries in this year's contest. So, let's, let's get started. In District Three, we have Riley Bramble, a 10th grader from Redwood High School. Congratulations. Next, we have Paula Cafarel, a grade four student at Oak Grove Elementary. Next, we have Avon Ford, an eighth grader, also from La Jolla Middle School. Tough work Supervisor Shucklian, tough work. I don't think Ryan was able to join us today, but we have Ryan Torres, an eighth grader from Valley Life Charter Schools, and we will make sure to get that award to Ryan. Nope. All right. Next is Isabel Wu, a fifth grader from Oak Grove Elementary. All right, next is Isabel Wu, a 5th grader from Oak Grove Elementary. And our final honoree from District 3 is Katie Jong, an 8th grader from La Jolla. Now Katie couldn't be with us today, but the outstanding art teacher who is responsible for all of this art is Elise Stringham. Congratulations. Would you guys like... Thank you to Ms. Stringham for stepping in and providing recognition for Katie.
And encouraging art.
And she has certainly done an amazing job. I think Ms. Stringham used to teach in District 4, and now she's in District 3, so I think District 3 and District 4 are gonna give each other a run for their money in this contest. All right, you are complete. All right, from District 4, Supervisor Valero can join us. Our first honoree is Natalie Hernandez, an 8th grader at Kings River Union Elementary School. Next, we have Gervie Anne Veloria, grade 9, Arosi High School. And from District 5, Supervisor Townsend can join us. We have a 12th grader named Juliana Valverde from Granite Hills High School. All right, we do get to bring Supervisor Valero back forward. He's got the overall winner this year for our cover. This year, our beautiful cover art is recognizing Victoria Trevino, a 9th grader at Arosi High School. Congratulations, Victoria.
I would just mention that she's also just got recognized as Valley Champion for Speech and Debate, the freshman in her class. So Valley Champion as a freshman for Speech and Debate.
Well, this concludes our presentation today. Thank you always. I think this is always one of our favorite days to come and present to you about what's going on in agriculture in Tulare County, and we appreciate that we have a Board of Supervisors that truly is a champion and a leader in supporting our agricultural industry here. So thank you very much, and have a great day and a great National Agriculture Month. Thank you again.
Supervisor Vanderpool?
Yeah, Mr. Chair, just to make a few comments, I just want to thank all of the teachers and parents, everyone that's encouraging their students in participating in this contest. You know, this is just, it's a visual thing, but it's also a knowledge thing. It's very important that our children understand what agriculture is and where the produce and the things that they consume comes from. You know, it's amazing when you talk to a lot of people who live in the big cities and you ask, "Well, where do you get your milk?" "From the grocery store." Well, there's a lot of people that think that, and the only way we're ever gonna change that is to continue to promote agriculture, and through fun contests like this, we have a really good chance of making more and more aware about it, and if we want agriculture to exist well into the future, people need to understand agriculture. So we have to start with our youth, and I sure appreciate the Farm Bureau's effort. It's great to see Superintendent Tim Hayer here, and Rob, thank you for all your effort. Continuing this program is so important, and the work that you do in the school system is absolutely essential to make sure that agriculture continues, and so your partnership with Ag is much appreciated, and I thank you for all that you do, and it's great to see you here in these chambers, Tim. So thank you.
I just echo the comments of Supervisor Vanderpool, and I think it's important that we don't take for granted that the people in our own communities recognize the importance of agriculture. I think so often that we assume because many of us are involved with it and see it that they recognize how difficult it is to produce the best quality fruit and vegetables and nuts in the world, and it's not always the case. So I think it's great for our own communities, and I love the fact that we have technology that's integrated into these art competitions. I mean, the grand champion winner with the drone on the front, I think that's because that's what agriculture is about, where it's innovative, it's doing new things, it's cutting-edge. That's how we're able to continue to be at the top of the industry, so it's great to see all these things. So thank you for everyone involved.
And I'd also like to just highlight the value of partnership, as mentioned by Tim Hayer. Things happen when we partner with each other, and so as I always have said, teamwork makes the dream work, and so thank you so much to these two entities coming together to produce great talent.
Thank you. We'll now move on to public comments. Any member of the public that would like to speak on any item that's within the Board's jurisdiction but not on today's agenda, please come forward. State your name and address for the record, if you would. Either microphone's available, and if you have handouts, please give to our clerk.
So, good morning, everybody. And if any artist would like to stick around for this, I'd appreciate to offer you guys an opportunity if you're interested. First of all, though, I'd like to thank you all very much for the support that you show for the arts. Thank you very much for having me here, and I'm really happy to be here. I'm here representing the Visalia Arts Consortium. My address is in Visalia. My name is Ampelio Mejia, and I am here to invite you all to our South Valley Art Tour, which is taking place south of Highway 198 from Visalia to Springville. And we are really happy to be featuring over 30 artists showing at various different locations. What you have in your hands right now is a map to the locations and a description of what the art is there and what you can expect, but there will be much, much more than what you see there, and hopefully you'll be really, really happy with not only the artists who are in our area, the talent that you're gonna see, but also their willingness to communicate about their process, about their materials, about really, really their life experiences in the arts. And we really are lucky to be in Tulare County because not only is the nature inspiring, but our leadership is inspiring to the arts, so thank you all very much. And I would also, if there are any artists here still, we've put out an annual magazine, the Arts Consortium puts out an annual magazine, not this one that you have in your hands, but we've opened up, we usually only took digital media before, and we've opened it up to all mediums, and it's open to all Tulare County residents, and what it is, is just a, we just need a picture that is either honoring a person or a culture or historical, something historical, or a landmark in Tulare County, and we will have a jury, and we'll choose, and the winner will receive $500. So we're very, very happy to be able to offer that, and if anybody's out there and interested, please talk to me, and I'll get you started. But thank you all very much for all your support, and if you have any questions, I'll take the no.
And I just want to thank you. I know Supervisor Vanderpool in the past has said, has asked that you get out into other communities outside of Visalia, and this is proof in the pudding, so thank you for reaching out to other communities.
Great. Thank you all.
Any other public comments? Mr. Wells?
Thank you very much. Colby Wells, SoCalGas Public Affairs Manager. Just wanted to come before the Board today and give a brief update of the natural gas industry and kind of what's going on in our world, and I know I've talked to many of you at various times, but just wanted to get you all on the same page. As you all know, the state's going through some greenhouse reduction goals, both for 2030 and 2045, and the state has started to go down a path of electrification for meeting those goals. And when I say electrification, I mean commercial, residential, industrial electrification with the complete elimination of natural gas. So wanted to bring this up to you. Last year, AB 3232 was introduced into the legislature. If that bill were to have passed as written, it would have required all new buildings in the state of California by 2022 to be electric, and it would have required all existing building stock within California, residential, commercial, and industrial, to be retrofitted by 2030 to all-electric at the building owner's expense. So that's residential homeowner's expense and so forth. Gas Company obviously led the charge against that because that means, you know, elimination of SoCalGas. With a big contingent of industry labor, I mean, you name it, it was a very big group, fought that bill, got it turned into a study bill in order to study the effects of electrification of the state of California. I'm here to tell you that even though that battle was quote-unquote "won," it showed up again on the regulatory side. So this year, the CPUC has introduced a OIR, which is Order to Institute Rulemaking, for building decarbonization, which is their word for building electrification. So the battle is still going, we're still fighting that. SoCalGas is here to basically say, there's another path forward for the state of California. And as many of you know, Tulare County is smack dab in the middle of that battle and that role, renewable natural gas. SoCalGas is introducing renewable natural gas to our system. Renewable natural gas is anything that decomposes, so any human waste, animal waste, green waste, woody waste, you name it, it breaks down into methane. Capture that methane, we clean it up, we put it in our pipeline. That's a carbon-negative fuel, which means that all of those emissions that would have gone to the sky, the air, have been captured, put into a pipeline for use. So it's actually taking that out of the air, which is a carbon-negative. So SoCalGas is here to say, there is a path forward other than electrification, and we are here to say, to ask the Board just to keep the choice, keep the energy choice available for the state of California for the residents of Tulare County. Thank you very much.
I'll make sure, Colby, that you circle with staff, and we'll get that on our radar and see how we can help. I know it's important that as a county that we have affordable energy choices, and that's something that wasn't necessarily stated, but as well as helping our ag industry, so thank you for your help. Any other public comments?
Good morning. My name is Jeanne Greenwood. Address 345 North Jacob. I'm the Director of Parks and Recreation for the City of Visalia, and I came this morning to thank the Board of Supervisors for their support of the 2019 Visalia Senior Games Event. Visalia Senior Games is an Olympic-style competition for adults ages 50 and better, and it's really here to encourage adults to stay active and healthy later in life. Our first event started with about 200 athletes, a little over 200 athletes. This will be our fourth event, and we'll be right around 500 athletes again this year, similar to where we were last year. We're offering 16 different sporting events over two weekends, so the next two weekends are very, very busy for my staff. Next weekend, or I'm sorry, this coming weekend, we'll be at Mount Whitney High School with track meet and a swim meet. New this year is a cycling event up at Yocul Valley, and we're real excited to be able to continue to expand our sports offerings. And so that's my reason to come today was to say thank you very much for your support. And please stop by the events. We'll be, the first weekend, Mount Whitney would be a good place to come by, Saturday or Sunday, if you want to check out some of the events. It's great to talk to the seniors and hear the stories. The second weekend, March 30th, 31st, we have several events taking place out at Plaza Park, everything from pickleball to archery, and it's just a great time. So if you want to come by and help us award medals or talk to people, we'd love to have you out there.
I'm so glad you were just promoting the event, because I thought you were coming to give Supervisor Shuckling a medal, so...
I wish I was old enough to participate.
Yeah, I wouldn't guess that she's over 50s.
But I was on the council when this was first started, so it's nice to see how it's grown. Good work.
Thank you.
Thank you. Any other public comments? Seeing none, we will move to our consent calendar. Is there any items from the, that the Board would like to pull or have questions, comments for separate consideration, or members of the public? Seeing none, I will entertain a motion.
I make a motion to approve.
Moved by Supervisor Valero.
I'll second.
Seconded by Supervisor Townsend. Cast your votes. Votes are unanimous. It's 5-0. Soon enough, soon enough, maybe. We'll see. That's an upcoming item. We'll see about upgrades to the board chambers. All right, now we will go to our untimed items, our not-timed items, and we'll start with Item 39, a request from the Public Defender Office to approve the post-retirement employment of Chief Public Defender Ben Smukler as an extra-help attorney for the Public Defender Office.
Good morning.
Good morning. Come on up.
Tom McGuire from the Public Defender's Office. I don't know if you guys have any questions. Ben's been with our office forever, and he's got these last two matters, important matters to wrap up, and we'd like to continue him in our employment as extra-help.
Questions from the Board? Mr. Chair, just a comment. I mean, the reason this is an untimed item and being brought to everyone's attention is this does, this is a waiver of the rule that I believe it was PEPRA established regarding employees who retire and then come back to work for the county. But as we are seeing in not only the Public Defender's Office, but many other departments, we're losing a lot of that institutional knowledge amongst this baby boomer generation that's retiring, but the need for that knowledge is still there, and so as a part of our succession planning and succession management, I think we're gonna be seeing this happen a few more times, but I appreciate the fact that you acknowledged that and that Ben is willing to continue to work and support the rest of his work that needs to be done before he does retire.
Thank you. It's, we're having three people retire, I think, next week. You'll see three of them here in the box, so it's a continuing problem for our...
If there's nothing further, I'd move for approval, Mr. Chair.
All right, moved by Supervisor Vanderpool.
Second.
Seconded by Supervisor Shuckling. Any public comments? Seeing none, please cast your votes. Motion carries unanimously.
Thank you.
Now on to Item 40, request from Sheriff's Office to introduce and waive first reading of ordinance, amending or repealing Article 1 of Chapter 3 of Part 2 of Tulare County Ordinance Code.
Good morning, Chairman Crocker, members of the Board, and Mr. Britt. I'm Captain Mike Watson, and I'm here this morning on behalf of Sheriff Boudreau. I have with me Lieutenant Rob Moore. He oversees the boating unit for Sheriff Boudreau. In July of 2015, the Sheriff's Department assumed supervision of the Tulare County waterways. Prior to that, Parks and Recreation, Nickel Guards People operated the boats on Lake Success and Lake Quilla, and the Sheriff's Department operated boats on the Kings River. So that first year after we took over, we partnered our deputy staff with Parks and Recreation personnel that had done it previously, and when that training and operations were completed, the Sheriff's Department started the process of staffing full-time. We also upgraded, made upgrades in equipment and safety training. Over the last three years, we purchased several new boats that have replaced boats that are no longer... we purchased several new boats that have replaced boats that are no longer serviceable. Shortly thereafter, we started working on upgrading the ordinance with the help of County Council. The minor changes before you represent the responsibility of the Sheriff's Department and the Resource Management Agency. We, we request you approve the ordinance changes at your next meeting on April 2nd, 2019. Any questions?
Questions?
Chairman?
Yes.
If I may, I'd like to make an oral correction, which will be corrected in writing before the second reading. On, I believe, page 12 of the agenda, third page of the ordinance, the reference to Section 2-03-1130 should actually be to 2-03-1030. And the reference about a quarter of a way down the page at 2-03-1135, the word "Kinger" should be "Kings," as in Kings River.
Any other questions, comments?
I'll, I'll just make a comment. I, I think that this codifying of the communication between RMA and the Sheriff's Department is very important. It's part of the growing pains, I guess, of switching responsibilities from one department to another. But this is in the interest of public safety, and so I think both departments coordinating for logistics and safety purposes makes a lot of sense. So, I'm very supportive of this.
I echo Pete Vanderpool's comments, and with that, I'd like to make a motion to approve.
Moved by Supervisor Valero.
Second.
Second by Supervisor Shuckland. Any public comments? Please cast your votes. Motion is unanimous. Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Next, we'll go to item 41, request from the County Council Office to introduce and waive the first reading of an ordinance adding Section 170 to the general provisions of the Ordinance Code of Tulare County pertaining to claims and demands against the county and/or its officers or employees.
Good morning, Board, Mr. Britt, Ms. Peterson, Melinda. Jeff Kewen, Chief Deputy County Counsel. What we're recommending that your board consider today is adoption of a local claims ordinance. This fills a gap in the government code that requires folks who have claims against the county must file those in writing within a certain period of time, and that gives risk management a chance to review them and sort out those that have merit from those that may not have as much merit, and try to do early investigation and early settlement, if, if that's appropriate. There's a gap, though, in the state law that does not require claims to be filed for certain, about a dozen different kinds of claims. Many local agencies, counties and cities all over the state have adopted similar ordinances to fill in that gap and require those claims be filed locally. Again, so we get an early chance to look at those on the merits and sort them out. So, if your board has questions, I'd be happy to answer them.
Jeff, I have a couple. There's, so what we're proposing today is making 45 days be the, you need to submit a claim within 45 days.
That is for past claims that have not already been perfected.
Okay.
Matters that otherwise would be covered by the new ordinance. We want to try to clean out some things that may be pending, but we want to give folks a fair chance to, to know about this new requirement so that they can make those filings. So, that, that's the 45-day piece of this.
So, new, new claims would be, what, what would be the timeframe that they would have to?
They would have to file within six months.
And it varies between, currently, it varies depending on what type of claim.
Correct.
Any other questions from the board, comments, members of the public?
This is the first reading. We'll bring this back for second reading and possible approval at the next board meeting.
Entertain a motion?
Move approval.
Moved by Supervisor Townsend.
I'll second the motion.
Second by Supervisor Vanderpool. Cast your votes. Motion carries unanimously. Thank you. Next, we'll go to a request from the General Services Agency to introduce and waive the first reading of the ordinance adding Article 32 to Chapter 3, Part 1.
Sir, good morning, Mr. Chairman, members of the board, Mr. Britt, Ms. Peterson, John Hess, General Services Agency Director. So, much like the Lake Patrol item, this is to update the ordinance to reflect recent organizational changes. Currently, the ordinance indicates that GSA is part of RMA, which was separated in 2010. So, this would update and reflect the recent changes of the establishment of the agency about a year and a half ago. So, with that, happy to answer any questions you may have or provide more information. Much like the prior two items, this is the first of two readings.
Very good. It's General Services, GSA, Grounds and Water Sustainability.
Yeah, we, we get that a lot.
Let's just get that out there, yeah. Any questions, comments for Mr. Hess, members of the public?
With that, I'd like to make a motion to approve.
Moved by Supervisor Valero.
Second.
Second by Supervisor Townsend. Motion carries unanimously. It was touch and go, Mr. Hess. All right, now we'll move on to item 43. You're still up.
Yes. So, again, John Hess, General Services Agency Director. If I might have Mr. Newby, Robert Newby, come on up here. So, this is an item that has a farm lease proposal that we are looking to solicit proposals for, a piece of property the county owns north of Government Plaza. Yeah, I've got an aerial photo here that might be helpful. So, Robert can give us a little more info on the process of the lease and who the current lessor is.
Well, the county of Tulare is a lessor. The lessy current tenant there is Cal Western Farming. They've been farming it since the early 2000s at a certain rate there. But their lease has terminated. It went to a month, year-to-year lease, and we'd like to put the property back up for lease. This action will put the property back up and through the process, request bids. I, I can indicate that the property does not have an existing well there for irrigating it. It's been farmed for the last number of years as for root stock, and the Cal Western, who farms it, owns the adjacent property that has a well, and they're be able to, they're able to bring their water over to irrigate this property. And so, we have a process in place. We'll be coming back another date and move forward with the lease process, if that is what the board's desire is.
Questions?
Thank you. I, I asked for this to be on untimed because I, I know we've had discussions in the past, specifically in the Space Ad hoc Committee, about surplus property. And I know we've, we've looked at that, we've evaluated our, the old courthouse, and we, we sold that, we got that off the books. And it, I, I wanted to bring that today for the, for the two new board members because I don't necessarily have any problem with, with, you know, making sure that we're still having someone put this in productive use. But if we don't have any near-term, or even, I mean, maybe long-term needs for this property, then I think we need to begin the process and start looking at declaring the surplus as well and, and going through and, and selling this property. I know that there's plenty of departments that still have capital needs, whether it's library, or fire department, or sheriff department, or any other. There's, there's a ton of needs as far as upgrading facilities and getting additional capital improvements for existing. So, I, I know that we can utilize the dollars today if we had them. Any other questions, comments?
And I'll just make a comment. Yeah, I'm, I'm in complete agreement that we don't need to just hold on to property because we've had it in our inventory. But at the same time, I know that there are needs that are current, and there are needs that may come in the future. And if we own the property and we could potentially build upon it to meet some of those needs, we might want to consider that as well. So, you know, unless we're able to get some specific needs that I know are very time-sensitive addressed, I'd hate to just start liquidating some open property that we might have right now. But I, I do agree. I, I think that having this come public is important as well, so that we're truly transparent in our actions to lease potentially valuable farm ground in an agricultural county.
So, one comment regarding that. The lease would still provide the opportunity for the county to sell if we wanted to do so during the term, and the purchaser would just be a successor, and, you know, they would inherit that lease as part of that transaction. So, if we decided to do so during the term.
Other questions, comments?
Is the current lessor interested in continuing to lease the property?
Yes, they are.
Any members of the public have any questions, comments? Not, I entertain a motion.
Move approval.
Second.
By Supervisor Townsend, second by Supervisor Shuckland. Cast your votes. And the motion carries unanimously. Thank you.
Thank you.
And final, final?
Yes, on this one, I'll have Capital Projects Manager Dennis Lehman and Capital Projects Coordinator Kyle Taylor come up to present the Fire Station 1 construction contract.
Good morning, Board, CAO, Chairman, and Counsel. I hope the state finds you well. We're here today, we've.
Speak into the microphone a little bit more. You're usually so animated, Dennis.
Yeah, I know. You guys are intimidating me today for some reason. We're here today, we've opened up, we had a bid protest for our Fire Station 1. We opened up the bid about a month ago, and there was a bid protest on that. And I'm here to introduce Kyle Taylor's Capital Projects Coordinator 3. He'll be coining over kind of the particulars for that, any questions you may have.
Good morning. So, I'm Kyle Taylor, Capital Projects Coordinator 3 with the General Services Agency. Your board approved the bid for the Fire Station on December 18th of last year, and bids were opened on February 7th. The low bid was submitted by Atkinsburg Green in the amount of $3,855,000. However, they did fail to list certain subcontractors on their subcontractor list. And the second low bidder was Forkhamackee. They submitted a bid in the amount of $3,920,000. And within 24 hours, they did file a bid protest in regards to the missing subcontractors as submitted by Atkinsburg Green. Staff reviewed the protest and the subcontractor list that was submitted, and we did find that Forkhamackee's bid protest was factual, and we do recommend upholding the protest and awarding the project to Forkhamackee. I do know that both Atkinsburg Green and Forkhamackee are here and would like to speak and present their sides if the board so wishes.
Question? In the staff report, it says Forkhamackee, and that was $4,555,000, and you just said 3.9. Is that?
Oh, well, that, that told, there's a bid alternate. So, the based, the base bid from Forkhamackee was $3 million. If you add the alternate, then it's $4,555,000.
Questions, comments, members of the public? Any member of the public wishing to speak before this? Please state your name and address for the record, either microphone is available.
I'm Ed Burgreen, owner of Atkinsburg Green. My wife's the Atkins side. She owns the other half. We've been doing construction for about 16 years in the county. Both grew up here. So, yeah, we were the low bidder. And on Fire Station 1, we noticed clerical error, and I'm currently doing another project for the probation vocational ed north of town by Bob Wiley. So, I called up Kyle and says, hey, we left off the electrician. What do we do? So, he said, you know, amend it and send it in. So, we did that in a timely manner. We did it actually the next day. So, what speaks to this, I think, directly is the California Contract Code 4107.5. The title of that is Claim of Inadvertent Clerical Error in Listing Subcontractors. So, we left off the electrician known as Cable Links. So, the first thing that you go to is, was there bid shopping? That's, you know, typically, if you don't list one of the contractors, then you slip somebody else in. That is clearly not what happened here. So, Cable Links provided a sworn affidavit that they bid to other bidders, most of the other bidders, on February 7th at the same price as us, including Mitchum, which listed Cable Links. So, this shows that there was no bid shopping. It was simply a clerical error. I don't believe it's proper, based on the evidence and the documents, to award this to Forkhamackee. Within that, that same contract code, it says there has to be some compelling reasons, and there aren't any, to the contrary, not to award this to Atkinsburg Green. So, that's my statement. Any questions?
I have a question.
Sure.
You say that you called and you amended it the next day. Was that before the deadline?
Yes. Everything, everything that we did was timely. There's some two-day restrictions, and everything that was done was, was done in, in a timely manner.
You mean before the bid opening date?
Yeah.
Supervisor, was it submitted before the bid opening date in time?
No, no, no. We noticed, yeah, the day after.
I thought I heard.
Yeah, February 8th, yeah.
Thank you. Any other public comments?
Recommendation of our counsel, we just referred to our legal letters that have already been provided to the county, so.
Please state your name and address.
Oh, Joey Mackey, Forkhamackee Construction, President. So, if you guys have been presenting those letters, that's what we're basing our case and our claim on. Okay? Thank you.
Any other members of the public wishing to comment? This is on closed session.
It is.
Counsel, do we have need?
Do you want to, do you want, okay, we'll adjourn into closed session.
We'll adjourn into closed session. We'll be back shortly. Thank you. We'll be back in open session.
Chair, if there's nothing, if there's no public comment, I, after confering with counsel, I do not believe that there have been any legal issues that have been raised that would lead us to deviate from staff's recommendation. I do believe that the protest is valid and that this contract should be awarded to Forkhamackee. So, I would make the motion that we follow staff recommendation.
We have a motion by Supervisor Vanderpool, second by Supervisor Shuckland. Please cast your votes. Votes are unanimous. Move on to item 45, a request from the Clerk of the Board to award the contract for the Board Chambers Technology Upgrade Project to Servant Sound and Communications. Amount of $432,949. Proposal?
Say that again, I couldn't hear you.
Can you hear it?
PA systems.
Yeah, PA went out, yeah. It's on the voting deal, but you can't do that either.
What?
Good morning, Chair, Board Members, CAO, and County Counsel. Melinda Benton, Chief Clerk with the Clerk of the Board's Office. Stop. Okay, as you mentioned, the item for you is to request.
The audience is just wondering, is God speaking?
It's from the other side of the, I mean, everybody.
That was right here.
Right here.
Now you know how I feel.
I'm multitasking, right? Like you said, okay. It's to request award a, a contract for the Board Chambers Technology Upgrade Project to Servant Sound and Communications in the amount of $432,949. On November 6th, 2018, the Board approved an RFP for technology remodel of the Board Chambers that are in need of upgrades to the aging audiovisual, multimedia, and room control system. The RFP resulted in three responses, and Servant Sound and Communication was the highest ranking from all, among all scores. This, this project will result in a high-quality, high-definition, state-of-the-art audiovisual and room control system to facilitate and document the county's Board of Supervisors' meetings, voting records, and presentations. This, in addition, the project will provide high-definition, high-performance, professional digital multimedia, and broadcast systems capable of meeting the county's current and future audiovisual and room control technology needs. At this time, I would like to take a moment just to acknowledge those who have assisted me with this project, Kyle Taylor with Capital Projects, and Daniel Dela Cruz, Donnette Jones, and Jeff Meter with IT. And if you have any questions, they're here as well.
Just a few comments. I think it's important that
I think it's important that, you know, the purpose of this is to make sure that things are easier to hear if you're in the back of the room, as well as functionality, as far as the, the individuals that are at home listening or in their, in their offices, other county staff, seeing what we're doing, as well as helping with staff time, as well as far as uploading documents and minutes. And so there's a lot of good technology upgrades that, that I think are, are needed for this chambers that hasn't seen a lot of TLC over the last few years. And so I, I think this will benefit the public as well as staff.
I, well, who, who is the historian in this room? I don't even know. A couple of old people on the dais, but they're not historians of these chambers. When was the last time that the technology was actually really upgraded in these chambers?
Gosh.
Nineties? Maybe?
Probably.
So when I was in elementary school? Okay. Yeah, I don't even think they had computers at that time, so that's kind of interesting, but. Yeah, this is absolutely necessary, and this is going to enhance the ability of the Clerk's Office and the Board to truly be even more transparent and to document and record the meetings and the decisions that take place here on a hopefully weekly basis. So I am very supportive of this.
Settle, Pete.
Of this technology improvement, and I would move for approval if there's no public comment.
Second.
Moved by Supervisor Vanderpool, second by Supervisor Sheckland. Any public comments? Please cast your vote. And the votes are unanimous. You didn't see that correctly, right? All right, now to the main event. Request from the County Administrative Office to receive the mid-year budget report for fiscal year two thousand eighteen nineteen.
Good morning, Mr. Chair, members of the Board. Jason Britt, County Administrator of Officer. It's my pleasure to provide to you today a brief major update status on our county budget. The full written report is in your packet, and today's presentation will reflect some of the highlights of that written report. The major budget report is an opportunity to review the financial condition of Tulare County's adopted budget, which was approved on September eleventh, twenty eighteen by your Board. This budget report provides the opportunity to evaluate the fiscal outlook of the economy and future challenges, thereby allowing for adequate preparation for the county's next budget cycle, which is nineteen twenty. Some of the highlights we'll hit today is we'll discuss briefly our financial strengths and challenges, some salient state budget highlights from the proposal that's being discussed in Sacramento. We'll also talk about, a little bit on a local perspective, and then we'll get into the mid-year report, department requests, and the requested action. So our financial strengths, Tulare County's general financial strengths and challenges are very, we maintain several financial strengths, including aggressively pursuing economic growth and development. Our budget is in alignment with sustainability, so we're, we are budgeting conservatively and spending conservatively. Our growth of reserves and trust fund management. We have effective debt management. We are, are engaging in capital improvement, construction, and expansion. And our performance levels with our departments and the county are within the county's adopted business plan. Some of the financial challenges that will have to be addressed in the coming years are, some of these are more global and some of these are more specific. Globally, we continue to see increasing legislative and regulatory requirements relating to employee compensation. We start, we are continuing to see legislative court cases that are driving up the costs of our overtime, particularly for some of our public safety departments. And we continue to see a legislative environment that is favorable to public workers. Additionally, a rising employment, employer retirement contributions, including our pension obligation bond payments, are something that we are on the watch of and have been for a long time. This includes future potential assumption rate decreases based on actual analysis and industry standards, which in turn will increase our annual contribution to the retirement plan. Additionally, detention facility operational costs involving public safety, mental health, and healthcare costs. As we look towards opening our South County Detention Facility, there will be some new costs and some different costs that will come our way that we'll have to ensure that we plan and fund into the future years. Additionally, our, our planning efforts with our fire department in terms of fire stations, improvements, transport, equipment, and staffing. Today, we approved the bid for the Fire Station One, but there are still a number of needs that we continue to have to look at for the fire department. And then, of course, zones of benefits, which is our water and wastewater systems. Those systems continued, there continue to be challenges in the ability to raise rates and to, and to capture the full cost of those, of those zones of benefits. And therefore, there will be some challenges that we'll have to look at between, before now and twenty twenty-two when they hit their borrowing limit from the general fund. And then, of course, we have groundwater management and a number of other things that may affect our assessed evaluation and other effects through restrictions as we implement Sigma, and many other issues that were discussed earlier today around agriculture and, and those issues. And then, of course, I would be remiss if I did not talk about a potential economic recession. And of course, those challenges are unknown, but depending on the, the timing, the affected business sectors and magnitude, that could present some financial challenges. Looking at the state budget Governor's proposal, just a few highlights here. The Governor is proposing a balanced budget. He is continuing to reserve for a rainy day. He is continuing paying down budgetary debt. And they too are planning for, the new word is revenue growth slowdown. So the state prudently and wisely is also preparing for that. They're paying down a lot of the liabilities and hopefully put the state in a better spot if a recession does occur. The proposed budget, state budget seeks to forecast California's economies and revenues are assumed to continue, to continue growing, although the risk of recessions, recession is rising. For example, revenue, including transfers, is expected to be one hundred and thirty-seven billion in twenty, in twenty eighteen, twenty nineteen, and one hundred and forty-three billion in nineteen twenty for the state. However, both January and February's cash flow report from the State Controller reflects lower than forecasted revenues. So for two months in a row, we're starting to see showing, slowing revenue from the Controller's cash report. So for the fiscal year to date, state revenues are one point four percent lower than this, than the same time last year. So not a lot, but again, these are some signs that people look at in terms of the pulse and the health of the economy. One area that's a bright spot, at least as the proposal is written, is the IHSS, the In-Home Supportive Services, where the Governor is proposing changes to the maintenance of effort that would increase state funding for IHSS by an estimated two hundred and forty-one million dollars next year. And the impact to, to Tulare County or to the counties would be to reduce the inflation factor from seven to four percent. So that effectively reduces our costs, and the, the Governor is putting more general fund into, into that program. So I know a couple of years ago, there was the seven percent inflation factor, along with other changes to the program, was pressuring county's budgets. And therefore, there was a lot of concern raised, and through the success of CSAC and many other groups, the Governor is proposing to reduce that and, and hopefully reduce the cost to the counties. This slide we kind of took from, well, we didn't kind of, we took from the Governor's proposed state budget. And what's, what's interesting here is that after twenty nineteen, twenty twenty, after, where you see the little arrow, that's where there's, the Legislative Analyst Office is reflect, is forecasting a potential recession. So if, if the state does dip into a recession, the state is projecting that they could lose over twenty-five billion in revenue. So again, these are things we were, we are tracking. We'll continue to look at them, but that is a significant hole to the state's budget if that, if something like that were to materialize. Locally, although we're, we continue to project a modest increase in assessed evaluation, according to the Assessor's Office, there are signs of slowing in the market. The January California Association of Realtors Sales Price Report indicated California as a whole had a twelve point six percent drop in sales of existing family, single-family homes year over year. And the same report showed less than a one percent positive increase in medium, median home, home prices for the county of Tulare. Additionally, sellers are getting less asking price year over year. And at mid-year, the Assessor Clerk recorders reporting eight thousand less recorded documents this year compared to last year. So all of these signs point to gradual slowdown in the market, which in turn affects our assessed evaluation and property tax collection. Some, some, continuing on with our locals' perspective, our sales and use tax allocation. There is a, a nine-year chart here, and on the very far right in the two thousand nineteen column, that is what we budgeted, a little over nine point nine million, eight point million dollars. And we are on target to either meet or exceed that revenue. So again, just wanted to make sure you had some historical perspective. The same for Proposition one seventy-two, which is our public safety one cent, half-cent sales tax. The tax revenue was budgeted in the adopted budget at twenty-eight million, and we are on target to meet or exceed that budget revenue. In summary, the county general funds departments are projected to finish this fiscal year within net county costs adopted by your Board. And additionally, consistent with past practice, care of the fund balance is expected to be above the necessary level to end the current fiscal year and to appropriately prepare for the next fiscal year. Tulare County's strong financial position is reflective of a number of things. Number one, the conservative budgetary approach by the Board of Supervisors used in developing reasonable general-purpose revenue estimates, meaning our discretionary revenue. The unused contingency appropriation of five million dollars, and budgetary sustainability practiced by our agencies and departments. The continued development of financial reserves as recommended by the CAO and the Board. So all of those things continue to contribute to the strengths of Tulare County's budget. A quick five-year budget summary for the general fund just shows that we continue to grow our budget year over year, and it shows the number of filled and allocated and the percent of filled positions. These are general fund-only positions. There are other positions outside of the general fund. There are approximately five thousand allocated positions in the county. So we continue to have our percent of filled positions relatively stable. Our mid-year general revenues, which is our discretionary revenues, if you look at eighteen nineteen, the very far right, we are about forty, fifty-three percent recognized, which is about one percent less where we were this time last year. So compared to the previous years, not, not too far off. Our overall revenues are thirty-six percent collected, which is one percent lower when compared to the prior year, but still in line with past revenue collections. This reflects all revenues, not just the general fund revenues. Our expenditures, as you see there, the trend line continues to be about the same. We are a little bit more expended this year as compared to last year. And there are a few reasons for that, namely encumbrances to vendors that were recognized earlier and paid later. The county, countywide cost allocation plan and indirect costs from general liability, workers' comp, et cetera, get charged out. So, but however, we are on target to meet our budgeted expenses. So, so again, we're a little bit higher than normal, but not, not by much. So moving on to the department requests for capital assets. County Fire is requesting to purchase two F-two-fifty trucks and a wood chipper. This is in support of the CCI grants that this Board adopted later, earlier this year to continue our fuels reduction in our, in our tree mortality areas. Health and Muma Services Agency is requesting a car, a vehicle, and a freezer. The Road Fund is requesting a compactor. The Sheriff is requesting two double-stacked ovens and a trash compactor. And then on the personnel request side, probation is, in your original PowerPoint, it has, it has two, but the actual number is five deletions of probation correction officer one-two. And the Public Defender was requesting to amend an investigator one to an investigator two. Some budget adjustments being requested this year are listed here. In general, the Agriculture Commissioner is just asking to move some money around. There's also showing the purchases that we went through earlier and the accounting for the decrease in the salaries based on the personnel actions in, in probation. And then we'll also be purchasing some minor kitchen equipment for all of our facilities. And then in our outside fund department request, we again are, the purchase of the two ovens and the trash compactor will be done through General Services, so we're asking to transfer that money from my office to General Services to complete those purchases. And then the same thing is happening for our County Fire Department, for the wood chipper and weed abatement, and also for our road funds. So this just shows the budget adjustments that are going for the purchase of those. The one thing I do want to notice, note on the utility fund is that there is an additional one hundred and seventy thousand five hundred and eighty-two dollars for our solar project, and that is primarily to pay our third-party consultant and our materials and soils testing company to ensure that the project company, that the vendor for that project is performing their, their contract as specified in their contract. And then a few amended class specification requests, as shown here. Administrative Secretary, Assistant Chief Investigator for the District Attorney, Chief Deputy Treasure Tax Collector, Investigator, District Attorney Supervisor, Investigator Welfare, Fire Apparatus Engineer, Fire Apparatus Engineer forty hours, Fire Chief Battalion Chief, Fire Battalion Chief, Fire Battalion Chief Admin, Fire Captain, Fire Captain Admin, Fire Lieutenant, and Fire Lieutenant forty hour. We are just asking the Board to adopt the various changes to these job classifications. There's no impact to the individuals. They're just changes to the specif, to the classifications, specifications. And finally, we'll move on to the budget schedule. This is our budget schedule for the coming recommended budget preparation. As listed here, we will post our Notice of Final Budget Hearing on August twenty-eighth. We will have final budget hearing materials to the Board and the public by August thirtieth. The recommended budget will come here on September tenth. And then final budget hearings will also continue, will start that day and may continue to October second if necessary. And then the personnel resolutions will be finalized by November, September twentieth with the adopted budget book to the Board and the public by November twentieth. We will also continue to use our budget protocol plan in building our nineteen twenty budget, which are budgeting for historically reasonable revenues. Conservative revenue estimates will be budgeted, thus avoiding an unbalanced budget. We will also look at, continue using proceeds of, from sales and assets for future capital needs. We will look at one-time funds for one-time purpose when setting departmental and agency targets. And any structural increases or substantial one-time funding should reflect some analysis of either improved operational expenditures, efficiencies, or corresponding decreases in expenses. I want to thank the board, the CIO's office, the clerk of the board, HR and D, the auditor, tax collector, the assessor, county council, and all the departments and agencies for their help in this process. As you know, it takes a lot of work in a short amount of time, so we just want to thank each and every one of you for that. And, so, requested action today is to receive the mid-year report for fiscal year 2018-19, approve the proposed schedule for preparation and adoption of the fiscal year 1920 budget, which incorporates a rollover budget as the operating budget, including capital projects, for the period between July 1st, 2019, and adoption of the fiscal year 1920 budget. Number three, to adopt the personnel resolution to delete and amend positions and approve and amend the required job specifications and classings and designations stemming from the mid-year budget report, subject to completion of meet and confer. Number four, to approve the asked, capital asset purchase list. And five, authorize the auditor, controller, tax collector, with concurrence of the county administrative officer, to process any budget adjustments stemming from the mid-year report. And with that, that concludes my presentation. Any questions or comments?
I have a question, Jason. Back to, you mentioned about the pension obligation bonds. Can you tell us now, or maybe a, a report at a later date, what's happening? How, how's that going? You know, how are the?
Thank you. I'm glad you brought that up. Yeah, we'd be happy to. Right now, we're in our first year of the pension obligation bond, so there's, so we really haven't had a lot of experience with it. So, we are watching that very closely and looking at both, one, how is the pension obligation performing? Meaning, are we, is our rate of return higher than the interest we're paying on them? And number two, what's happening with our employer contribution side?
And how is it affecting?
Correct, and how will it affect it? This is going to be a topic of, will likely be a topic of our next joint meeting with the Board of Supervisors and the Retirement Board to talk about that and those impacts, so that we can bring in all of the actuaries and the financial consultants to really answer all your technical questions and really dive deep into the weeds on how that's happening. But ultimately, the way the pension bonds, bonds were structured were, we weren't, we were seeing minimal savings in the beginning years, and we would see more savings in the out-years as, as the program went on up until the 19th year, so. So, not a lot of experience to report right now, but it is something we are watching and will bring back to this board with time to time for some updates and information regarding that.
Just on a general note, I think as, as long as the retirement system is producing at least 4.25% return, then, then there shouldn't be a, a negative impact as far as the actual contributions that we're giving. There still could be a negative impact as far as creating a new unfunded liability, if that's, if it's within the 4.25% and within the 7.25% of the unassumed rate of return. But, but that's, but then, but that includes everything that we've got. So, I mean, that's, that's an issue as far as if it's within that margin, just in general, regardless of the POB.
And as we get more experience with that and how the markets performed in the years as it, as the bond markets and the market and the time goes on, we'll get more experience to be able to provide you a better report about how that is going. Right now, we're just sort of in our first year, and we don't, we don't really have enough data right now to share with you.
Any other questions, comments, Supervisor Vanderpoel?
I think the comment that I would make, you, you briefly touched on it in, in indicating the shortfall of the state's revenue estimates as compared to what the budget was built on and some of the assumptions that were made there. You know, I, I think that we have to be very careful and cautious. We can be optimistic about the position that we're in, but at the same time, I think we all know that the writing is on the wall, that we've been riding a pretty strong economy for a significant amount of time. And historically, if we look at what has happened following this long of an economic ride, it's, it's a downturn. And we don't know what will come in a downturn in terms of the state's reductions or changes that may be made. You know, right now, IHSS looks like it's going to be a, a bit of a favorable action by the governor, but if revenues continue to not meet expectations, all of a sudden, that cost may be passed on to the counties, and that's an unknown that we have. We, we also know that the federal government is taking an approach, looking at addressing their deficits as well. And that could be funding, a reduc- could mean funding reductions at the county level. So, you know, in terms of the board making commitments that are ongoing with so many financial unknowns, we have to be very, very careful. And, and I do think that the budget protocol that we have historically taken in terms of underestimating revenues and overestimating expenses is a very prudent thing to do. And I'm glad to see that the person that is in the seat next to me has changed, but that approach has not. So, I would just make those a few comments.
And, and to that point, Supervisor Vanderpoel, in June of this year, according to the state, this will be our 10th full year of an expanding economy. So, bright, we are, we are strong. Tullary County is doing well, but there are signs of potential downturn, and the 1920 budget will reflect that cautious optimism.
Just along those same lines, I wanted to personally thank Mr. Britt because he gave me a little bit of an, an update. Personally, I asked, had a few questions. He answered them very well. Made, made it very understandable, the way that we go through the budgeting process and the methodology as Supervisor Vanderpoel just went over. And so, and it made me very comfortable to look at it that way, in the way that we're approaching it. So, thank you.
Any other comments from the board or members of the public? I, I just want to thank staff as well, and, and I think it's important to note that there's, the terminology as far as whether a recession's going to come or not, or is, but I, I think the other term that was there is a slowdown. So, even if it's not a recession, even if we have stagnant growth or we have no growth, that's still impacting us, or it's not necessarily negative, but it changes our projections from revenue. So, in either situation, and I'm, I'm hoping for a slowdown, because just realistically, that's probably, you know, the, the rate that we're growing right now is, is, I mean, historically, it's gonna, it's gonna slow down or come to an end. But hopefully, we've got a slowdown rather than a full-on recession. Let's not go through that again. But, neither here nor there. With that, entertaining motion.
Any public comments?
Public com- yeah, I, I asked for public comments. Any other public comments?
Sorry, just a friendly reminder.
No, that's all good.
I would move for approval, seeing no public comments.
Moved by Supervisor Vanderpoel, second by Supervisor Valero. Cast your votes. Votes are unanimous. Did I say, is Supervisor Shucklian, was she the one that seconded it? Did I say it wrong? For those, for listeners, it was seconded by Supervisor Shucklian. Very good. All right, we will, I, do we have any, any need for closed session?
We do. Mr. Chairman, Items A and C are off calendar. Item B was already heard in closed session, and there is no announcement out on that item. So, Items D through J will now be heard in closed session. So, if there is no public comment, the board may adjourn into closed session reconvening at 1:30 for the study session.
Very good. Thank you all.
Stephanie Smidell, Tullary County Council, Deputy County Council. Board of Supervisors authorized the defense of individually-named defendants with a reservation of rights. Reporting on closed session, Item G. Board of Supervisors authorized the defense of individually-named defendants, including those to be named later, with a reservation of rights. In the case of Davis versus City of Visalia et al., the adverse party is Melissa Davis. The case involves motor vehicle accident. The motion was made by Pete Vanderpoel. It was seconded by Supervisor Amy Shucklian, and it carried unanimously. Stephanie Smidell, Deputy County Counsel, reporting on closed session, Item H. The Board of Supervisors authorized the defense of individually-named defendants, including those to be named later, with a reservation of rights in the matter of Ramos Suarez Vanessa versus Jason Dugan and the county of Tullary. The adverse party is Vanessa Ramos Suarez. The case involves personal injury resulting from a motor vehicle accident. The motion was made by Supervisor Amy Shucklian, seconded by Supervisor Eddie Valero, and the vote was unanimous.
Jennifer Flores, Chief Deputy County Counsel, reporting for Item I. The Board of Supervisors directed legal counsel to defend in the case of SEIU Local 521 versus County of Tullary, Public Employee Relations Board Case Number SA-CE-1092-M. The adverse party is the Service Employees International Union, Local 521. This case involves a charge against the county of Tullary for alleged violations of the Myers-Millias-Brown Act, Government Code Sections 3504, 3502, 3503, 3504.5, and 3505, and Public Employee Relations Board Regulation 32603, Subsections A, B, and C. The roll call vote was on motion of Supervisor Amy Shucklian, District 3, seconded by Supervisor Eddie Valero, District 4. The vote was approved unanimously. That concludes the reporting out for this closed session.
All right, we are back in session. It's 1:30. And we will begin with our first topic, our study session, and that is to review the composition of the Defined Contribution Committee. Mr. Cook, you have two minutes.
One and a half.
I could do it in one.
Even better.
Good afternoon. Thank you for allowing us to present. Today, I'm representing the Defined Contribution Committee. I serve as the Plan Administrator and as elected to the Chair of the Committee. Also like to thank the committee members for their diligence in serving on this committee and fulfilling their fiduciary responsibility, as well as the board for supporting the committee, especially for the match that has been enacted. And we've seen participation rates grow and contributions also increase with that. So, just quickly, I want to get straight some terms. So, there's the Defined Benefit Plan, or that's the Pension Plan. When you think of that, that would be TESERA. And then, there's the Defined Contribution Plan, or our 457 Plan. And, so, a Defined Benefit Plan promises a specified monthly benefit at retirement. The plan may state this promised benefit as a flat dollar amount or as a percent of salary. And that's the plan. When we think of pensions or TESERA, that's what we think of. And then, when there are losses in that plan, the employer is responsible to make up those losses. With the Defined Contribution Plan, or the, the, the subject of this meeting, does not promise a specified amount of benefits at retirement, and instead, it's a defined amount that you're contributing to the plan, and the participants, it's their money in the account. The employer may make contributions, the employee makes contributions, but when there are losses, they are losses of the participant. I just wanted to make sure those things were clear. So, we have a, a committee composed of 11 members, and the purpose of the committee really can break, be broken down into three major headings. We develop and adopt policies, we review and evaluate performance, and we communicate and educate participants of the plan. So, there are a number of policies. There's an investment policy, education policy, bylaws. And we make sure that the investments are performing as they should. We benchmark those investments, issues with those investments. We will remove those investments, look for other investments for our participants to be a part of. So, we're looking at performances. We have quarterly meetings. We also have an annual investment review meeting. We all, we use a consultant to help us in these efforts. Just recently, we had a mock IRS audit to make sure that we were in compliance with IR, with regulations, and it went very well. A few recommendations that we will be implementing, but overall, the committee, the committee is functioning properly and performing our fiduciary responsibility. So, I'll just move on. Current composition of the committee is made up of 11 committee members. Five are part of the, the committee as a result of their position. There's the auditor, controller, treasure tax collector, CIO or his alternate, the Human Resources and Development Director, the county assessor and county council or her alternate. Then, there are five active employees that are nominated and approved by the board, and those are by district, and they serve four-year terms. We also have one retiree participant, which is nominated and approved by the board. We also have staff, a legal representation, as well as a staff analyst to help us in our duties. So, that's our current committee. If we compare to other counties, nearby counties, Fresno, Kern, Kings, Madera, Merced, the average committee size is 5.4, with a low of 3 and a high of 7. So, that's, you know, much lower than the 11 we have. We also, at other counties within California, they had populations of at least 200,000, and the average size of those committees was around 6. So, why change the committee size? Well, you look at best practices, efficiencies, costs, and making sure we have quorums when we meet. Smaller committee would be more efficient, more economical. There's a wide variety of skills and experience on the committee. A smaller, more dynamic committee should increase attendance and also participation. The, there are 11 employees that are participating on the committee, and it's not an insignificant amount of time. We do have those quarterly meetings, we have subcommittee meetings, there's trainings. So, if we can get the job done with, say, seven instead of 11, I think we can do, we can do the job just as well and probably maybe even better. And I'm fine with being ahead of the curve and doing things different than other people, as long as there's value in that. And I just don't see the value with having the 11. So, a proposal or a recommendation for a committee size. And that, just as, this is just one idea. It can be done in many different ways. I think the size or the number of the, the people on the, on the board is more important than who actually is on it. I mean, there's, there's a number of ways we could do this, but for one suggestion, you have four, four ex officio, so auditor, controller, treasure tax collector, a CIO or alternate, human resources, development director, and then, I think, the retirement administrator adds. We currently have the retirement administrator on the committee, not in his position as the retirement administrator, but as appointed by the board. But he brings, or his replacement would bring knowledge and expertise that I think would benefit the, the committee. And then, you could have two active employees nominated by the committee and approved by the board. I do think there is value in having a retiree on the board and representing those folks who have retired, but are participants in the plan. So, I mean, that's in it in a nutshell. We want to shrink it, make it more dynamic, effective, and, and make the best use of people's time. That's, that's the report. Yeah.
A couple of questions for you. Has the Defined Contribution Committee had attendance issues in the past or not?
We've had core, problems meeting our, our quorum. Yes.
So, tech, really, you're going from 11 to 3. Because if you have four ex officios, do the ex officios not vote?
Ex officios vote.
Okay, okay. So, the ex officios will vote then. Okay. Because I'm an ex officio board member on several boards, and it sucks because I can't vote. My vote doesn't count. So, that's like the worst membership you could be on, right? Go to board meetings and your vote doesn't count. But anyways, okay, so that's good. As long as they- But anyways, okay, so that's good, as long as they're voting members. I'm in favor of doing whatever's necessary to make this committee the most effective. I think the representatives that you have identified, I think that in the ex officio, you've really covered the very important, and then, those that the Board would appoint could be just members of our workforce that are just interested in the retirement subject area, are interested in defined contributions specifically. So, hopefully, some with financial backgrounds would be interested in doing that, and definitely very supportive, Cass.
And I'd also like to say that I just commend you for, yeah, looking at this matter and your great attention to the structures and systems within your department. And so, I know that sometimes streamlining, or in order to be effective, can also be challenging, but again, great work on trying to bring better processes in place.
Any other comments from the Board or members of the public? My one comment is more directed to the CAO, is I think this type of item, I don't know that this would have been necessary for a study session, that we could have just brought it before the full Board, as far as an action item.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. The reasoning we brought it here was because we wanted to kind of pitch the idea and get direction, because it will require amendments to bylaws, and I believe there's an ordinance or some, there's some policies that will have to be amended and brought back to the Board. So, that's noted, but we just wanted to make sure that people were on board and felt that this was a good composition before we came forward.
Thank you, Cass. Our next and last item is our draft economic development study and implementation plan, and we have Mike Washam that will tee this up.
I will tee it up.
And are you responsible for the 106-page presentation, Mike?
We plan to only go through three minutes per slide.
I'm just asking.
So, we will have intermission for dinner, and then, we'll go from there. Thank you so much, Chair.
Coming from the guy that, never mind.
Thanks for being able to bring this forward to the Board today for a discussion. The County commissioned Cosmont Company to prepare an economic development study and an implementation plan, so that's what we're here today, to present that. I know that Paul from the EDC is here, he is going to have some comments later, and I'd like to step up at the appropriate time, too, to discuss the EDC and our participation. But let's go straight to the report. Cosmont Companies is a nationally recognized expert in economic development and real estate projects involving government and private sector partnerships, and that's really a big key here as we move forward in strategy. Ken Hera serves as President of Cosmont Companies, and for District 2, you'd like to know that he holds his degree in economics and business from UCLA. So, with that, I'll turn it over to Ken.
Why didn't we have this discussion before we hired him?
Thank you very much, Chair and members of the County Board. It's a pleasure to be here. I guess I'm responsible for the 106 slides. I'll just tell you a quick story. I was in Yosemite. I was invited to speak at the CalCOG Conference, which actually I spoke at a year ago in Monterey, and the first thing my colleague said to me is, "Are you kidding me? You have 70 slides in 10 minutes to deliver to 200 people." And so, I've been accused of speaking fast. In all seriousness, our report is really for your consumption. We've spent several months working on the analytics of it. It's designed to be pretty data-rich, if you will. Ultimately, the data and the information we pulled and researched for the county informed a strategy, and really, it's about the implementation. And so, as a company that's been in business for 32 years, we've really tried not to be just an organization that writes reports for you all, and then, you know, you get to read it and fall asleep. In all seriousness, we want it to be an actionable report at the end of the day, and we want to help you implement some of the strategies. So, what I'm going to do is go through this, I will try to get through it in about 15 minutes or so, in all seriousness, and I will highlight some things that I think are sort of relevant from a data perspective, and then, get into opportunity sites and really try to spend some time on implementation steps in a game plan. So, I appreciate being here. And again, we appreciate...
Ken, just for the record, take as much time as you need, I mean, within reason or whatever, but don't feel rushed.
I appreciate that.
I believe this study costs more than something, a five-minute presentation would warrant, so please do share. We're just teasing.
And by the way, I'm...
From Bruin to Bruin, I'm just being honest.
Oh, I love it, I love running into other Bruins. I am here, yeah, I mean, I don't have any place to go or a plane to catch, I just got a long drive home. Other than that, I'm certainly available to continue this dialogue. Again, broken now by analysis, strategy, and implementation, San Joaquin Valley, eight counties, Tulare's within that. We did take a look at not just the cities, obviously, but unincorporated county regions, the CDPs, there's 59 CDPs, you know that, but we tried to do a fair amount of...
CDPs are...
Census Designated Places, and those are in unincorporated county areas, you know, they're not incorporated cities. You've got kind of three major cities. We do have data on those cities, but we clearly have some data, importantly, on the Census Designated Places and really the unincorporated areas, and you'll see that. So, 469,000 folks live in the county itself. We also isolated that population base of about 75,800 within the unincorporated areas. Average household incomes, some metrics I like to look at is average household size, and at 3.38, you can see that's higher than the state average, and the median age of 30.5 is a relatively young population. And those are important metrics, because I'm going to talk a little bit about the trends as well, which is what I spent time with CalCOG talking about, is that this sort of millennial generation that's really driving a lot of broad change, demographically speaking, in terms of how folks consume and communicate and commute. And so, those are sort of some big trends, macro trends, that I think also are very relevant and germane to your younger population. Now, if you really break down those ages and household sizes, you'll find in the unincorporated areas, again, 75,000, 76,000 folks, 4.03 average household size. These are big households, big families, and young, 27 and a half years old in just that unincorporated area. So, and when I was speaking last year, I did a little trivia for the audience, and I said, you know, in the eight counties in San Joaquin Valley, what was the median age, above or below 40? And in the audience, interestingly enough, very few people raised their hand for below 40, because the instinct isn't necessarily that we have a millennial population driving, you know, 4 million people in the San Joaquin Valley, and that's really the case. Population growth, I'll just go through some of the highlights and feel free to ask some questions. Millennials and Gen Zs. So, in Tulare County, 47% are millennials and Gen Zs. The millennials are 18 to 34-year-olds, the Gen Zs are 5 to 17-year-olds, and the impact they're having, again, on these demographic shifts and utilizing technology to communicate is significant. So, we look at those metrics. In California, those two groups make up 40% of the population. So, the millennials have become one of the largest population cohorts in our state and frankly, in our country. Race and ethnicity, Hispanic origin in the county is 65%. And then, we did some research on education, here's household sizes again. Home values, home values clearly are below the US or the California ratios, but I can tell you, in my discussion at the Policy Conference, 5 million folks are coming into California every year, 6 million are leaving. And there's two reasons, cost of housing and cost of taxes that are just both extraordinarily high. So, there's a value proposition, if you will, based on your housing pricing here in Tulare and in the Central Valley in general. That's how I see it. We summarize that, and again, this is for you to study if you'd like. We watched unemployment over time, all pretty commensurate with the general decline in unemployment, and you'll see some pretty healthy metrics as well. When I get into the market section with respect to vacancies, you know, you don't have high vacancies, which is a positive sign. Sometimes, that matches jobs as well in terms of a low unemployment rate, relatively speaking. Annual wages have been on the rise. In an agricultural environment, obviously, you have a high percentage of ag jobs, there is a seasonality to those ag jobs. And then, you can see at the top of the industries for both where folks, your residents of the county, where they work, and then, the jobs within your county are both led by the agricultural industry, needless to say. Top employers. And then, I really want to get to the slide, which is kind of a culmination of this job capture, we call it. Later on, I'm going to share with you sales tax capture, because sales tax is an important revenue piece for cities and counties. In this case, jobs are coming in at the rate of 55,000 and leaving at the rate of 57,000. And to me, and to us, that's a very stable and very strong sort of job base for your county. Now, we look sometimes at cities specifically, and the dynamics is a little bit different. Any city near Los Angeles is an example, they're going to have jobs going out more than they're going to have jobs coming in, right? Because there's job centers where folks are driving to. Sometimes, we see this where there's exaggerating zero jobs that come into a city, per se, and everybody goes out to work in a suburban environment, in a, you know, where there's not a job base. Obviously, Tulare County has a significant job base, and so, that's the health of your job industry is what we're trying to show here. And then, you know, where folks go and where they come within the county. We then specifically looked at some cities, just so you get a feel for how the averages are affected by Visalia. More folks come into Visalia to work than leave, so that's a pretty strong job base center in Visalia. In the case of the city of Tulare, more people leave than come in. And in the case of Porterville, same thing.
Thanks, Amy.
Another important metric we do like to look at is jobs-housing ratio. So, the cities, those three that I mentioned, which sort of have a significant population base, are at a very healthy level, if you will, a very high ratio of jobs to housing. And in the case of the unincorporated areas, which we're trying to zero in on here, that ratio is a lot lower. This simply says that 11,200 jobs and 18,700 homes, those areas could use more jobs if there was a strategy to that. And/or, to get to the ratio that seems to be 1.42, which is the county's ratio, and 1.4 in the state of California, somehow or another, that dynamic has to change. It's not unhealthy, per se, but it gives you a picture that folks are clearly leaving those unincorporated areas to go work in employment bases.
Quick question, not to interrupt, but what about the people that are staying home? So, like, work from home, how is that captured or reflected in these slides?
It's a great question, because there's sort of unemployment, and then, there's underemployment, if you will, because those metrics seem to be kind of evasive. You know, the concept of telecommuting and working from home is really a trend that's taking place these days. And so, I think those jobs are not being captured. In your traditional metrics, they're not. In the same way, back in 2008, when we were in the middle of a recession, and you were looking at unemployment, what did we find? We found that at some point, unemployment got stronger, you know, got better, I should say, but there was also the reality of people saying, "I'm out of the workforce." And so, did they get captured if they decided to not work at all, or start a home business, or leave the state for that matter? Traffic counts, again, summary. In terms of some metrics, this is the market section, and these are the vacancies that I mentioned that are relatively healthy. The vacancy, we looked at industrial, retail, industrial office and retail. In the industrial market, overall, and there's different ways to dissect industrial, 2.5% vacancy, which you can tell relative to the other counties as comparative counties, Kern and Fresno, it's very strong. And your market at 35 million square feet and 2.5% says that you have a very strong overall industrial market. It's not, sometimes those metrics are low square footages, so they may be in a little bit of an anomaly, but you've got a pretty strong market. And then, we dissected that. Well, actually, the lease rates that go with vacancy are commensurate. We dissected it where warehouses are 25,000 square feet or greater, they're a little bit of a smaller product type than the large distribution facilities, 1.6% vacancy, again, very strong. And then, the distribution, which are 200,000 square feet or greater, it shows a 7.6% vacancy. Now, that might look like it's high, but when you have large buildings, it only takes one building to have a vacancy, per se, and it can skew those numbers sometimes. So, if you do the math at 6.7 million square feet, that's only 500,000 square feet that shows as a vacancy. If 300,000 got leased up tomorrow, you know, you'd be back in a very strong equilibrium. And then, this is a weird slide, but the bottom line is your food processing has no vacancy. So, clearly, there's either demand, depending on how you want to look at, 2.9 million square feet of food processing facilities, and that all rolled into that 2.5% industrial vacancy that was pretty strong. Retail, 3.3%. Now, I'll pause here for a second, and how many folks have read, you know, that there's an apocalypse in retail? In other words, it's on its way out. It's clearly changing dramatically, and I could spend more time talking about it, because I've got a pretty strong background in retail, but at the end of the day, you have a 3.3% vacancy, which has, that's relatively healthy. Not very many folks can claim a healthy retail market today with the bigger boxes that are all getting sort of smaller, and there's some real vacancies in those instances. We're working for a lot of downtowns as well. We do work across the state, and so many downtowns are suffering from these vacancies as a result of larger storefronts that have gone out of business. So, again, gives you the picture of that on a relative scale to the other counties. Rents are commensurate, office vacancy, same thing, 2.9% is strong, and then, multifamily at 5.2%, which is also a pretty stable number by way of vacancies. So, retail, just to spend a little more time on that. Your retail sales in the county are about $4.9 billion. What is important to us is to look at that on a per capita basis. Now, when you compare it to the other regions that we analyzed, you're at $10,400 per person. And you can see that Visalia, just specifically as a city, does $16,000 per person in retail sales. So, it's relatively strong, but I think these numbers are all pretty stable, again, based on your lower vacancy. So, we showed those to you on a comparative basis, normalized per capita. And then, I want to get to another sort of slide that culminates a little bit about what's happening in the world of retail here in the county. And at the end of the day, you, overall, the county has a surplus. So, you're enjoying the idea that that purple bar are the cash registers that are ringing within your county, same number you just saw earlier, $10,400 per person. The wallets of your citizens within the county are spending $9,200, which means that your cash registers are ringing, and people are coming in from somewhere else to spend money into your county, so you are theoretically capturing sales. And what you'll find is, in the unincorporated areas, you can see that that bar is less than the green bar, the purple's less than the green, which means dollars are going out of those unincorporated areas, clearly to go into probably some of the cities that have more of the retail draw and concentrations, and that's evidenced by Visalia, Tulare, Dinuba, et cetera. If you look, this is, I know there's a lot of numbers, and I'm willing to, again, answer lots of questions, but what this really says is the overall retail is coming in your county, not leaving, and if you look at the red, those are the dollars that are theoretically leaking. The dollars that you're capturing are general merchandise, pretty significantly, grocery and some restaurants. But the numbers in red that are supposedly going out, maybe to another county, or not going to another county, to a degree, they're going to technology. Because if you look at the categories of sporting goods, electronics, books, that's all online. Not all, the majority of that is an online base these days, because those commodities are coming to your doorstep, and they're coming through, by the way, distribution facilities and last mile delivery facilities, which is why you can translate this actually into opportunity with respect to the industrial market. I do a different set of metrics. It shows the vacancy decline in industrial is steep and dramatic, and the vacancy decline in retail over time is relatively flat, which means that the industrial market is actually turning into a distribution... is actually turning into a distribution of retail goods and services or retail goods. And so we, I call that the distribution revolution. So this is what this is really telling you, you're capturing general merchandise, grocery and restaurants. And generally, those are the things you want to be positive in your county because they're the, um, brick and mortar opportunities for your citizens. And then we looked at that same set of metrics in the unincorporated counties specifically. And you can tell dollars are clearly leaving for general merchandise, for grocery and for restaurants. And then very specifically, because, uh, Mike and I actually did some, some work i- in, in advance of, of, um, you know, some of the conclusions, but we saw that in areas like Cutler, Orocy, we are, we were finding that health and personal care and grocery seemed to be absent. And so we actually analyzed some areas very specifically, but the unincorporated areas for health and personal care is an example, is, is leaking pretty substantially. And then, um, to a little lesser degree, that's true for grocery in the unincorporated. We show major shopping areas. And then, um, I want to show you a map of the opportunity zones. I can spend more time on those, but clearly those are a major tool and I'll get into implementation here in a second. But it's a major tool to induce private investment because it allows for the deferral or the elimination of capital gains. It's a national program and they have seventeen opportunity zones in your county. And we've been talking a lot about it from a policy perspective, particularly at this, this CalCog and Local Government Commission Policy Conference. Uh, it was a pretty major topic. It's been a major topic at the state capitol. And while there's many funds that have been created to use capital gains investment into the opportunity zone areas, one trick in California is we have SEQA. And we have to figure out a way where there's a path, I'll call it the path of least resistance, the path of progress, where investors don't get bogged down in an environmental process where they can take those dollars somewhere else and they don't have SEQA. So it's becoming, it's a challenge for California to figure out a way how those investment dollars can be doubled in thirty months. That's what the regs say. You got to double the dollars in thirty months to get the benefit. So I can talk more about that as appropriate. But then we looked at specific opportunity site areas. We focused on Goshen, Early Mart, Traver, Pixley, Cutler, Orocy. And then there's a lot of information here on sort of SWOT analysis, strengths, weaknesses, challenges, opportunities, threats. And so I don't, I won't spend, um, too much time in this, but this is very important, I think, for your go-forward sort of marketing. And these are your opportunity side areas, um, to really be leveraged, if you will. Okay, tools. So this is getting into implementation. In a post redevelopment world, we believe there are tools. There are economic development tools that can be utilized. We've utilized some of these tools, zoning strategies, special districts, I want to talk about EIFDs here in a second, opportunity zones, which is the latest and greatest. And so, um, we walk through kind of a roadmap for implementation. Special district strategies. Really, one of the key things for us is our thought is on EIFDs, it's leveraging tax increment financing, which when redevelopment went away in two thousand and eleven, two thousand and twelve, we were absent of the ability to leverage TIF, one of like two or three states. Well, now we have that tool back in a way where you can create special districts. Does not take a vote to create an EIFD. You don't have, parcels do not have to be contiguous. And there's some, some other really strong benefits. It's all about how value can get created and then it's using that tax increment to really, at the end of the day, pay for infrastructure. And the other tool, so that's not an increase in taxes, the other tool can be a CFD and they can work hand in hand. And a community facilities district is where you do increase taxes and the burden is on landowners or users. But it's another way to try to pay for infrastructure. Obviously, CFDs, um, have been around for a long time. There's a time and a place to use them, but we see EIFDs and CFDs potentially working hand in hand in terms of special districts, special financing districts. Opportunity zones. The governor or new governor, you know, recently made some comments that he sees EIFDs in opportunity zones as the perfect matchmaker. He doesn't say perfect matchmaker, but basically that's the discussion is how can those be layered together? And I want to use an analogy. EIFDs need tax increment to build over time, just like redevelopment districts. So they take time. And if you were building a bridge and EIFD is sort of the last three quarters of the bridge, well, how do you get the first quarter of that bridge built? And that's going to take private investment generally so that you can kickstart that district, if you will. And so that's why to us, opportunity zones and EIFDs can go hand in hand in inducing private investment for the first part of that, uh, investment strategy. Opsites is a platform that is actually a marketplace for, um, for opportunity zones. And it's a digital platform that really allows clients and users to access a much broader net, cast a much broader net to find investors who are interested in investing. And then, uh, we've come up with a tool as well, uh, we call it sales tax assessment revenue. These are through development agreements, it's not a new tax. But we used it in two examples of industrial projects where developers said, I want to build industrial, but they needed an entitlement. And the city in that case said, we need commercial revenue streams because we can't afford to give those up. There's a lot of pressure now for general funds to find ongoing revenue streams because sales tax is declining, if you will. And so what we did was we said, well, there's a loss in retail, so there's an equivalent revenue stream that a developer can pay through sales tax assessment revenue, that's what we called it, STAR. And the developer was quote unquote happy at the end of the day because they could get their entitlement and get their project built. And then they worked through a development agreement with that particular city to come up with a revenue stream that satisfied, at the end of the day, really both parties. Another tool clearly is, is, um, are, we can kind of call it bear or we can call it business attraction and retention. And there's several programs that we listed, including tax credits, IBank lending, uh, some of the state grants, uh, for parks. We're actually going after a significant one for Redondo Beach as we speak. Uh, State Water Resources Board, EB5, which is a foreign investment platform, and then EDA grants. So there are several tools and these are the kinds of things that were applicable for, for the right opportunity sites with the right private partner. Some of these tools can be used to create projects, jobs and revenues for the county. And then overall, there's the marketing. Uh, what is very important is to use website, digital, uh, social media. And then, you know, your traditional on the ground marketing. I call it the air game and the ground game. You really want to leverage both. And so, you know, part of our next steps potentially are to say, we can help with some of those marketing efforts and be on the ground to introduce the private sector to, to you all. We show some samples of some marketing flyers, Opsites I mentioned, which is a digital platform. And then based on your feedback, next steps, you know, we can refine the study, if you will. But it's really further develop some collateral for the county for opportunity sites, both physically and digitally. Um, really try to apply some of the financing, uh, tools that we just mentioned. And then target partnerships. You know, this is also about public-private partnerships. Target partnerships and a lot of that has to do with outreach at the end of the day. And then we can evaluate on a case-by-case basis, EIFDs, CFDs, STAR, and some of the other incentive programs that are available. So that, that, uh, is a wrap, obviously, um, available for questions and discussion. Thank you.
Thank you, Ken. I, uh, Ken mentioned that he, he's been at the last two CalCog meetings and I didn't have the opportunity to go to this last year's, but, uh, the previous year in two thousand and eighteen, um, I went on behalf of TCAG. And, um, and so that's kind of how this discussion started was, um, he gave a similar, well, it wasn't as, it wasn't specific to Tulare County, but it was just in a generalized, uh, topic. And knowing that we have a lot of needs in our county, knowing that, um, if we build businesses and we, and, and attract new businesses, that that helps us meet some of the needs that we have, that that's a, a good opportunity to grow revenue. Um, I know Mike Washam was able to, to meet with, with Ken over the next few months. And then ultimately, we as a board approved, uh, moving forward over the summer, uh, to get to, to get an agreement in place. And so here we have the final report. So I appreciate that. I think the emphasis has been, it's interesting to see some of the data, but I, ultimately, the implementation side, I think, is really what, it's how can we use this information that we have to, to get new businesses, to, to grow the businesses that we have, um, so that we can get more sales, so that we can have higher property values, keep people employed, um, and that we can help with all the services that are necessary, um, because of those increased revenues.
I, I just want to make one other comment, I appreciate that, Chair, Chairman. There's a qualitative aspect to, to public sector. And I'll just use the term business friendliness. And, and I'm going to use it in, in the, in the opposite because we're working with a lot of communities right now where, in all honesty, there is not a, there's a business unfriendly, um, sort of approach or an environment, whether that's just the way they were historically or not realizing that things have changed so much today. The, the public and private sectors really need each other. So I, we have found in our analysis and our review of even some of your current programs, which we think are, are, um, are business friendly. And I think that's a, that's a positive from a qualitative perspective, so I just want to add that comment.
All right. I, uh, thank you for the presentation, Ken. I appreciate all the detail and look forward to, uh, uh, reading more into it. Um, you spoke a bit about opportunity zones. Um, could you maybe give a little overview of, uh, I know those have been on the street for a little bit of time, not a lot. So there's probably not a ton of data. How are those being utilized in other jurisdictions? And, um, what are some opportunities in opportunity zones here in, uh, in the county? Because I, and, and I'll give you a specific example. I, I look at the, uh, south part of the county, specifically the Early Mart area. There's a ton of opportunity there. But one, one of the major challenges that that community faces is a lack of housing. Um, and the lack of housing exists because of a lack of water, wastewater infrastructure. Um, and, and so that school district's being faced with a decline in, uh, average daily attendance that's reducing their budget by over a million dollars a year. It's significant. So I, I, I see the opportunity zone designation, uh, as something that should attract the investment into the community to build the necessary housing for the school to stabilize and for additional economic growth. But they lack the infrastructure to accommodate that. So how do we connect those dots and put those pieces together to enable the platform for growth?
That's a great question. I, I scrolled down, as you noticed, we actually put an appendix, sorry to go through that so fast. But there is an appendix to the report, I'm not going to spend time in it, but I want to use the section. We have EIFDs in Creas where we get into really some more details on how they work. And then we have an opportunity zone, um, section. There's the details and the basics of literally its mechanics. You know, it is a ten-year, the, the greatest benefit that a private investor is going to gain is if they hang on to an investment for ten years because they can eliminate capital gains from the appreciation of that investment. And that is really not a program that's existed before, to my knowledge. So it's a major inducer of, of private investment. The, there's an obligation to double the value of that investment, of the capital gains that's used to make the investment through an opportunity fund into an opportunity zone. There's an obligation to double that value in thirty months. So in two and a half years, that's part of the IRS regulations, that value has to be doubled. So again, that's why kind of I use the term shovel-ready projects. Projects need to be ready to go so that investment can be made. That's important. What's interesting about Early Mart, I don't know why, it's not in an opportunity zone. And so we actually have that in here as maybe even not a challenge, but it's a benefit for some of the other.
Thought they were an opportunity.
Yeah, and, and I really don't know the reason why, there's a little carve-out of it not being in an opportunity zone. Um, but I think the answer to your question, standpoint of, um, of sewer and major utilities, is really that's where the potential of an EIFD or a financial, special district, that's really where that can come into play. And I think to the extent that infrastructure needs are true for parts of your county, I think that's, that could be a very good tool. And again, parcels don't need to be contiguous. There's not a, the same type of clock that's ticking for opportunity zones. Opportunity zones have a short, relatively short window in that you can benefit from it. But by two thousand and twenty-six, you actually have to pay the tax on the original gain investment. So there's a clock ticking to opportunity zones. So I just want, that, that's a sensitive time component to, to O zones.
Just to clarify on the, on the Early Mart opportunity zone, early, the, the carve-out of, again, opportunity zones are based on census, uh, blocks. The opportunity zone doesn't have the, the center part of Early Mart. It's got from Avenue fifty-six north and it goes to Al Paul to Rich Grove. That was designated because we have projects lined up, sitting on the shelf, ready to go. Uh, a hotel and, and the market and other development, as well as a large residential development, should we get the pieces in place. We also have some approved, uh, subdivision maps that are actually in that as well. So that's why we made that switch or recommended switch to the governor's office.
Thank you for refreshing my mind. I knew that there was at least some coverage, so.
Yeah, absolutely. I, I think we did a, a, a good job on that. I have some other follow-up comments, but if you have more questions, then I'll, I'll, I'll follow up after, after you guys are done questioning Ken.
Are there going to be any non-UCLA people speaking today?
I'm not UCLA, I'm just a fan.
Oh, okay, that's all right.
I'm Cal Poly.
I, I, I wouldn't have mentioned that, right? I mean, because I also know there's some folks from the other school that are clearly, you know, around or fans of the other school.
Hey, nobody cares about that school, for the record, okay?
But Mike was kind.
I'm not talking about University of Spoiled Children today. There's a lot of graduates from the Harvard of the West that are here today, but.
Okay, I appreciate that.
I would just like to say thank you so much for your thorough, uh, PowerPoint. Uh, one of the comments that I wanted to make, which is differs a little bit from Van, Supervisor Vanderpoel in terms of housing, although housing is much needed in, in the areas like Cutler, Orocy. But what we're really in need of, especially in communities like Cutler, Orocy and Sultana, are the retail spaces. So we're talking about what fifteen thousand and if you include Sultana, which is another sixteen thousand, for only one grocery store in and around the area. So I think we really need to start focusing, especially in those areas, how we bring in additional retail services so that our community members don't have to kind of travel as far to get to the amenities and sundries that they need.
Totally understood.
I'll, I'll respond to that directly is that Ken and I met with Smart and Final and other specifically pitching sites in Cutler, Orocy. And, and that is a, a piece of, if you look through, have time to look a little closer, you're going to see that, that in the unincorporated areas, there is bleed, uh, leakage of retail for groceries into the cities because there's not availability in the unincorporated area. So that's, that's noted, that's an effort and that, and I'll talk a little, touch a little bit more on that in a, in a moment after, uh, we're done with this part.
Just a clarification on the opportunity zones. Has the IRS finalized their rec, their recommendations or their guidelines for opportunity zones?
No, they haven't. And, and honestly, Chairman, uh, Crocker, that, that is also at, at issue right now.
Right.
The opportunity zones. The, the program has been in place since January first, two thousand and eighteen. So the investment had to, the gain has to come after December thirty-first, two thousand and seventeen. We're in March of two thousand and nineteen. So I scratch my head too, and because the IRS is literally still coming up with some clarifications on the regulations. And if you, just using an example, if you have a ten million dollar capital gain and you're trying to park it in a zone, I would think you'd want to be pretty clear on what the rules of engagement are. And so I think that's causing some of the, the sort of quote-unquote delay.
And I, I just bring that up because I know, um, um, it, no one's put, put it in place yet. I mean, the, the areas are identified, but there hasn't technically been any, um, investments into the opportunity zones because the regulations aren't final.
And in California, it's our understanding, because it's a little bit anecdotal at this point, there's a hundred, a hundred and fifty opportunity funds, which is trying to accumulate those dollars. Again, you have six months for those dollars to be invested in an opportunity zone. And ninety percent of the dollars have to be invested. So there's a time sensitivity. While those funds have been created, the majority are not in California. And they are probably waiting, I am speculating on the sidelines, for some of that important clarification.
Are there questions from the board, members of the public? All right, stick around, Ken, I think we're not done yet.
No, uh, I, thanks a lot, Ken, for that presentation. I was just going to touch on a couple of points that he brought up and then make a cou, a couple of comments regarding the EDC. And I know the Paul's here and he'd like to address your board as well. So, uh, I know that he, mentioning implementing, uh, uh, the opportunity zone is, SEQA is a big issue, especially in California. But that's what your board has, has had that foresight to. But that's what your board has, has had that foresight to, to create all these, uh, community plan updates with upzoning and an, and additional allowed, uh, uses by right, which has really leveled that playing field out with us. For, I mean, our environmental process is, is as easy to get something built in here as it is in Texas. We need to get that story out to the developers. That's the big thing. Uh, we're, we're meeting with people all the time and it's like, we can't get anything done in Fresno County, Kern County, or this or that. But we're able to do that because of our foresight and our community plan updates and our upzoning. So I just want to mention that. Um, the other piece, um, is yes, we do need retail. Uh, and this kind of leads into the mission of the EDC. That I, I think the time's really come for the county to once again join the EDC in, in full participation. Your, your board goes back and has a one voice delegation. You know the importance of speaking as a unified front for the whole county. I think that's what we need for the, for the county as far as economic development. Uh, the EDC helped organize the, uh, a unified effort regarding when we went to the governor's office and we flip-flopped and rearranged the opportunity zones. Uh, we did that unanimously, all the jurisdictions within the county. And the fact is, the governor's office pointed out that they didn't see that occur any, anywhere else in the state of California. Everybody was out for their own jurisdiction, yet we came forward with a unified front. So that's what the EDC can do on a county-wide basis. We speak as one voice. And I think there's, there's a lot of importance to that. Uh, as far as the mission goes, uh, as the EDC and Paul can reflect on this, but the mission has changed somewhat because in the past, they really weren't focused on, uh, retail development at all. But now with the smaller communities, they're looking for, we need retail help. You know, a small store or whatever is, makes a big difference in these communities. So we're aligned with that on a lot of fronts for our rural communities. We need the same type of effort. Yet we still off, also go for the larger industrial things along the 99 corridor and Ingoeson and some of our communities along the corridor. So we, we, we do have that alignment with them. Um, I think that, that the other piece is that we do a CEDS, and you mentioned the EDA grant. To be able to get an EDA grant, you have to have an adopted, uh, comprehensive economic development strategy. And the CEDS, the, the EDC will prepare that. So that's, that's money that we're not having to expend, our staff and our resources. If we're doing a comprehensive plan for the county, we're just able to present our projects that we want included in that list. So that's another benefit for, for looking and going forward with that. Um, and, you know, that's, that's pretty much what I wanted to say. I think it's about time that we, 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 we join back in. The cost is half of what it was in the past, and I think we can utilize and leverage their effort with our own efforts and we can move forward in a unified front. So unless you have any questions, that, that concludes my comments.
I'm just to ask Supervisor Shuckley, and I know two years ago, we, we, um, we joined it as an associate or, or some type of auxiliary, not a full member. Um, and, uh, the EDC was kind enough to offer, uh, the county a seat, um, even though we weren't a full member. And so you've served in that capacity since that time period. So if you have any thoughts or things, I'd like to hear what you have.
Yeah, I think, uh, I think the TCEDC is working on a lot of issues that, you know, to be honest, some folks had some concerns about. Um, very willing to work on that with all the cities and of course, the county also. You know, personally, I think it's important, um, to be a region, to have a collaborative effect on folks coming into the county, wherever they want to locate. So, you know, I, I'm in favor of us, um, coming and being back a part of the TCEDC as a full member.
I, I'd just like to make.
And as, and as Mike says, there are some things that the TCEDC offers, um, to us that we as a county and our economic development department don't or, or can't do.
Well, yeah, some, uh, they, they, and, and Paul can, uh, talk a little bit more about this. But like economic development impact studies and reports where how much, if, if you go after this and maybe if they're looking for incentives, what value are we getting back for that, for that?
Right.
Investment, so to speak. So I, I, I agree on that. And then, um, I guess, uh, I, I lost my train of thought, you know?
Mr. Chair.
Yes.
I was just going to add to what Supervisor Shuckley said, that, uh, there's things that they can do that we, we can't do. But there's also things that they already do that we have done as well, um, and that we will actually see a savings by not continuing to duplicate that effort. Um, I've been a big believer that this board is, uh, a part of a cohesive effort. Um, and so even from the very moment that we took that vote to withdraw from the EDC, that was not something that I was completely supportive of because I think that we have to present a united front. We have to collaborate, work together, um, because any growth, whether it's incorporated or unincorporated, benefits our county in some way, shape or form. Um, and, and so working together with our partners to make sure that this area is better economically i- is all, the ultimate goal. And, uh, there's never enough effort that can be expended to help this county grow economically.
Absolutely. The, the comment I.
I knew I would trigger it.
You, you, thank you so much. I appreciate that. Um, when we're talking about what, what we can do and, and, and work with, uh, the EDC, there are duplications that we'll be able to eliminate, so that will benefit everybody. But also, as we look forward with what Ken on, on implementation, when we're looking for expertise for the EIFDs and, and that type of thing, that we're probably looking for a partner that, that has the experience there. Whereas on the marketing issues and some of those other things, we're probably rely more on Paul and his team. So there's, there's a, a balance there of, of, and utilizing the best expertise for, for the subject matter that we're, we're developing. So.
Paul, did you want to say a few words?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, members of the board, Paul Soldania of the Tulare County Economic Development Corporation. Uh, I did pass out a, um, a brief handout. I won't go through that in, in much detail. I want to point out a couple of things, uh, just for the benefit of the new board members. I know we were here last October and we talked about our new business plan model, uh, which, uh, we, our mission is the same. Our focus is the same. It's just that we, we now customize the work that we do for the individual communities that we represent. And in that handout, I provided you some examples of, of some of that, that work that we could, uh, essentially do for the county as well. To give you, um, I point out one of those in the city of Woodlake, right now, we're working with a, a developer on a proposed retail development. And we're helping putting, putting together tenant identification, demographic information, much of the information that's necessary that goes into the recruitment, uh, of that. In terms of that business plan model, uh, there's some key components that are focused of that. One of them, which is, uh, some of the comments that your board had mentioned, uh, the reduction or, or elimination of duplication of effort. Uh, we make sure that with each of the communities that we're working with, we're supplementing, uh, their economic development work and not duplicating any of the work that's being done. All of the, um, uh, work that we do has performance metrics tied to it. So that we make sure that we're accomplishing the things that everybody wants accomplished and not just doing the things that, that we feel are important to be doing in economic development. And then we've expanded, um, our program to work with existing businesses through a business loan program. And a, uh, we're actually expanding that to capitalize a million dollar fund, which will be available for us to take out to, uh, all of the communities throughout the county, all of the businesses in the county, and provide them with small, uh, um, micro and mini loan, uh, programs. In terms of, um, you know, our assistance with plan implementation, we, we have a list of, uh, several items that we can go through and coordinate, uh, with the implementation of what, uh, some of the things that Ken has mentioned, uh, including the op, uh, opportunity zone, uh, area, because that's an area where we've been fairly involved. To Supervisor Vanderpoel's question, uh, we, we've, have a directory of about 72 funds, active funds that are funding projects across the US. The majority of those are in residential development. Uh, so it is a key component that folks are using for that, um, particular element because those are the types of ready-to-go projects that, uh, that Ken alluded to. Um, again, our retail recruitment, uh, area can be expanded to include some of these, uh, some of these areas, uh, like Supervisor Valero mentioned, in terms of, of a grocery store in Cutler Rossi area, that certainly would be one of those types of projects, uh, that would fit well with that, uh, type of business plan. Finally, I just want to point out, the resources that we have available, uh, to the county and to all of our jurisdictions are unlike and unmatched really in the region. We spend a lot of time, uh, as the board knows, on putting together and identifying technology, uh, applications that we could, uh, utilize to really market and enhance, uh, the, um, the work that the EDC does and, and, uh, the marketing elements. In the next couple of months, as we've, uh, roll out our, our revised real estate database, we, I, I, I mentioned to the board in the past, we already have consumer and demographic and workforce data. Uh, one of the things that we're, will be featured in that will be a talent pipeline. So if, uh, if a, uh, individual companies or somebody wants to know how many engineers are coming through the college systems in the region, uh, that would benefit their particular industry, they'll be able to, to access that information directly through our, uh, website. And finally, the, um, the community investment fund that we're putting together, I think is going, a good opportunity for us to, uh, take that program out, work with, uh, with the county staff in, uh, reaching some of the smaller communities and the smaller businesses operating those communities and really give them some help that they need in order to, uh, to grow and expand. Um, lastly, I'd like to mention to the board that on April 5th is our economic forecast, uh, conference. Chris Thornburg will again be here in providing a forecast of where he sees the economy going in, uh, at the federal and state level, but also here in Tulare County. And I hope that the board, uh, is available to participate in that. So with that, um, if there are any questions for us, I look forward to working with, with Mike and Ken on implementing, uh, the plan.
Um, I'll, I'll make a couple of comments. First of all, Paul, thank you for, uh, your presentation. Um, I think really very worth noting is, you know, looking at this brochure that you handed out, really, really nice to see local signs. Uh, this is a local picture. Um, I know in the past, I feel like a, a lot of the informational, uh, material that was distributed had pictures of people from, you know, LA or San Francisco or wherever else. But seeing local info on this is just great to see. Um, I appreciate the localized and inclusive, uh, approach that the EDC has taken. Um, and I do think that, uh, uh, the county being a full-fledged member is going to be beneficial, not only to the EDC, but to the county. Uh, so I appreciate that and, uh, look forward to the benefits that will come from it.
I'd just add that, um, I know we spoke, uh, not too long ago, and I appreciate the metric side of things and, um, making sure that we're, um, achieving results and we're getting jobs. I mean, that's, that's the goal, is to create jobs, um, create some upward mobility for our residents. Um, and so I, I appreciate that point and, and then just the fact that, um, this is a complimentary, uh, effort to what's already going on. There may be a little bit of overlap, but nothing that can't be, um, dealt with. So I appreciate that. Any other questions, comments? Paul? Thank you, Paul.
You're welcome.
For Washington, you want to come back up? What do we, what, what does it look like as far as, we've, we've got some guidelines as far as implementation. What does it look like? Because I know for me personally, it sounds like, you know, every community's different as far as what the needs are and what we can actually do. I've always liked the idea of utilizing tools to help with sewer and water, um, because that seems to be as a whole, a, a, a great, um, hindrance to development in our unincorporated communities. And so if we can use some of these tools to not only help existing, uh, residents and businesses, but also to, to help be able to bring in new, uh, businesses or to expand existing businesses, that's, that's something that I'm very, I'm interested in all of the things, but I know, I'm thinking of Strathmore in particular and the lack of water, that that, this could be a big benefit for them.
It, it, it will be. There's, there's a, I would say the first approach would be to target those areas where we have development interest and just not, people just saying, oh, I, looking into it, but real projects. And we have real projects waiting to go, except for the infrastructure in Strathmore. We have real projects waiting to go in early mart, except for the infrastructure. We have real projects that want to go forward in, in Cutler Rossi, except for the infrastructure. So I would say those would see, uh, some obvious key points to tie that focus on where there's already developed or interest and projects that have already been proposed, already, so, we even have building permits sitting on a shelf just waiting for water. So those would be the, I would think that those would be the highest priority to try to get something to move there and get a logjam broken and try to get some, uh, some improvements in infrastructure there and look at all options.
So would we have a systematic approach as far as laying out a process? Or is it going to be more piecemeal as far as, um, project by project?
I, I would say, I don't like to say, uh, piecemeal, but I'd say case-by-case basis, more, uh, more of a, uh, analysis to look at, at that. But no, we, we should have a criteria developed and a process developed, but the implementation would be more on a case-by-case. And one of our great, uh, attributes is that we're able to be flexible and to be able to make those, adapt those changes that need to be for specifics. Because every, it's not, it's easy to say it's water and sewer. But what the issue is in Strathmore is completely different than what the issue is in, in early mart. It's, yes, it's the same utilities, but the problems and the way to, uh, overcome them are completely different. So a- again, it needs to be on a case-by-case basis, but we can create, uh, a pathway of, of how to approach those projects.
All right. Well, I look forward to that pathway then, on a case-by-case basis.
May I ask a question? So, um, if I'm understanding the EFID zones correctly, how does the, the property sort of tax sharing?
I, I will cur. Prefer it to Ken, because he'll have, I, I don't want him to speak.
Is it basically like RDA?
Well, uh, I'm, I'm really glad you asked that question because as Mike was talking about infrastructure. To me, we would have to analyze it a little bit closer. It seems like those areas we just talked about are lacking, sort of water, are very good potential candidates for an EIFD. The district, again, can be set up, um, without necessarily a vote. But it, the taxes that are generated from improvements, um, ultimately, if there's any bonding that gets issued as a result of those future taxes that are going to be underwritten, like RDA, because RDA was 45-year districts. EIFDs are generally 45-year districts. And th- there is a requirement of a vote, 55%. Now, another comment that the governor made is he'd like to eliminate that 55% vote. I don't know whether that's going to happen or not. But because it's so important that the infrastructure is needed, back to timing, creating the district then does become time sen, time-sensitive. Because if construction starts, you can't take advantage of that assessed value. And if you have multiple projects, I'm going to use a number of $300 million, $500 million. We have one project in Northern California that's going to generate $2 billion of assessed value improvements. It's a very good candidate. And now it's a policy decision. Um, but at the end of the day, it's, it's like a redevelopment, redevelopment, if you will, leveraging TIF, just at a lower scale, no school district money, et cetera. We did some homework, um, in preparing for this. The county, I believe, its share is about 15 cents of the 1% tax levy rate. Plus, there's a tax in lieu of vehicle license fee, which is another 16 or 17 cents. So when you put those two together, you're over 30 cents. And we find that that is what I call scale, that there's good scale there to use those. Now, you have to make a decision to use those dollars, but they're paying for infrastructure. And, and frankly, they're a bridge for the private community, the private developer, who's going to build that project. And they're struggling with how to pay for infrastructure. So you really end up being in a way at a, a partnership, whether it's formalized or not, by creating these districts to pay for infrastructure. So I think that's one way we can absolutely help in terms of analysis.
But is, on the EIFD, if, once the district was created, any of the, the increased, uh, valuation of the, of the properties within the EIFD would then go into this special fund or whatever we want to call it, that would help to pay for, um, infrastructure improvements?
Correct.
So, but it's, it's more narrow and focused as far as what you can use the dollars for. It's not as broad as RDA was. And, and, but I guess from a policy standpoint, the question would be, if we're planning on having that assessed valuation to pay for other things, then that's the policy decision that we're making for. So if, if we say we're going to use this for a specific infrastructure upgrades in certain communities, then that's great because that's needed. But on the flip side, you know, whether it's for other capital projects for the county specifically or general fund purposes, um, that's, the dollars have to go. It's all from, coming from the same pot.
Yep. So there is, I, I think, um, the way I like to put it is, there's a s- set of sources and a set of uses. of sources and a set of uses, and we, the, the analysis is analyzing those two different buckets. Where, where's our source of revenue gonna come from? We can look at it countywide. We can see there's gonna be improvements created over time in all of these pockets and parcels, use some zoning to analyze value creation, and then the question is, what are the needs? They may be project-specific, they may be regional, they may be county-specific, if you will, and so that's your strategy, and that's what we're doing for cities and counties. And, and the EIFDs, there's, I, I have in the, um, appendix, an indicator of, again, how they work technically, so, um, you can go ahead and, you know, study some of that. Again, they're forty-five-year districts, no vote to create, and then what they can be used to pay for. So this visual, uh, is pretty broad with respect to the use, so if it's utilities, that's an important use. Um, and then also where they are, 'cause currently there's about three. We created the one in LA County, which is in Laverne, uh, West Sacramento has an EIFD, and so does, um, a city in San Diego. And we're working with many others to see if, see if it makes sense. So one step is analyze the sense and sensibility of it. That's really the key step. But when I look at the metrics of what your share is, and I'm not even talking about the potential to have a partner of another special district participate in that, and/or a city to participate in that, because they each also get a share, obviously, of the tax apportionment.
I, I, I think that's the part, that it's figuring out where the value is more than the revenue lost for whatever the new project would be, or the expansion of a project.
Since essentially you're, you're sort of committing your increased revenue for assessed evaluation based on the project to pay for the infrastructure for, and then ho, with the hopes that that would continue to grow and it would get cheaper as people could hook on for less money and continue that assessed evaluation growth.
It's, it's like an investment decision that you're using for your taxes.
Just a, as a point of reference, you know, when you look at this and you could, if you wanna equate it to a TOT incentive, if not for that, there won't be any assessed value increase anyway. I did a study when we were looking at the Harmon Field down in Pixley, and we converted that and looked at, uh, existing zone, uh, light manufactured zone property based on our, our absorption rate. We had two hundred and fifty years' worth of inventory of land, just in Pixley. The problem is, we don't have the infrastructure, so if, developing, utilizing this tool may be able to spur some of that development and, and, and absorb that property and, and get value out of it, so.
Any other questions, comments, members of the public or board? Appreciate it.
Thank you very much.
I look forward to seeing more on implementation in the future. With that, we'll, uh, conclude today's meeting.
Thank you.
(cough)